Recording in progress.
Good afternoon, happy holidays.
Just when I was gonna start my karaoke.
Before we begin the agenda, the Wichita Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and the Wichita Sedgwick County Board of Zoning Appeals would like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to this public hearing.
I hope this is not an indicator of the rest of the meeting. I will try to do better. Welcome to the December twelfth Metropolitan Area Planning Commission meeting. I am your Chair, Brian Fry. I'd like to thank the board for being in attendance today. We only have one meeting in December, so we have a very lengthy agenda today. I just ask for your patience and grace as we get through this. With that, let's have the roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Fry.
Present.
Mater.
Present.
McKay.
Present.
Duel.
Here.
Bill Johnson.
Present.
Blick.
Present.
Nix.
Here.
Clontz.
Here.
Warren.
Present.
Joe Johnson.
Here.
Miles.
Present.
Zimbalman.
Here.
Aldrich.
Here.
Williams Bay.
Here.
I show fourteen members present.
Thank you, and I know we started the video, but we didn't finish it, so if we could requeue and begin again, thank you.
Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and the Wichita Sedgwick County Board of Zoning Appeals would like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to this public hearing. For those in attendance, copies of the agenda for today's meeting, the public hearing procedure, and planning department staff reports on all agenda items are available in the lobby. The planning commissions and the BZAs bylaws limit the applicant on a zoning subdivision or variance application and his or her representatives to a total of ten minutes of speaking time at the start of the hearing on that item, plus up to two minutes at the conclusion of that hearing. All other persons wishing to speak on agenda items are limited to three minutes per person. However, if they feel that it is needed and justified, the chairman may extend these times by up to two minutes. All speakers are requested to state his or her name and address for the record when beginning to speak. When you are finished speaking, please share your name, address, and the case number on the sheet provided in the room. This will enable staff to notify you if there are any additional proceedings concerning that item. All speakers at the podium, please remove your face mask before speaking into the microphone. Please note that all written and visual materials you present to the commission and the board will be retained by the secretary as part of the official record. If you are not speaking, but you wish to be notified about future proceedings on a particular case, please provide your contact information to the planning department. The planning commission and the board are interested in hearing the views of all persons who wish to express themselves on all the agenda items. However, we ask that all speakers, please be as courteous and concise as possible and avoid long repetitions of facts or opinions which have already been stated. For your information, the Wichita City Council has adopted a policy for all city zoning items. A copy of this policy is available from the planning staff. The city council relies on a written record of the planning commission hearings and does not conduct its own additional public hearings on these items. The decision of the BZA is final. Any appeal of a decision of the BZA is to the district court.
All right, thank you. Next item is 1.3, which is the approval of the November seventh MAPC meeting minutes. I show no absences.
Move to approve, oh, second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Blick with a second from Commissioner Miles. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item 1.4 is approval of the November twenty first, twenty twenty four MAPC meeting minutes, and I show Clontz and Joe Johnson absent.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Miles and a second from Commissioner Williams Bay. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Any abstains?
Abstain.
We have twelve in favor, two abstains. Thank you. Next item is 1.5, which is determination of the MAPC consent items. This is where we will go over each item on the agenda to see if there is a desire to have these cases heard. So we will roll through the first, which is subdivision committee recommendations, item 2.1, which is subdivision twenty twenty four dash fifty seven, final plat for Schumer Oak second edition, two hundred ninety-fifth Street West and West Forty-seventh Street South. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to hear this case? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this case? Saying none, that item will move to consent. Item 2.2, sub twenty twenty four dash fifty eight, Greenwich Apartments Edition, North Greenwich Road and East Thirty-seventh Street North. Is there anyone from the commission that would like to hear this item? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this item? Saying none, we will move item 2.2 to consent. And actually, because that one has an abstain, we'll have to vote on it separately rather than as part of the full consent, just as a heads up, anyone wanting to make a motion in the future. Item 2.3 is sub twenty twenty four dash fifty nine, one step final plat, Indian Ridge at Andale, West Thirty-seventh Street North and North Two Hundred Forty-seventh Street West. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to hear this item? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this item? I see a few hands, great. Is the applicant and agent present? All right, thank you. We will hear item 2.3. Item 2.4, subdivision twenty twenty four dash six zero, Geren's Acres Edition, South Maze Road and West Fifty-fifth Street South. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to hear this item? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this item? Saying none, we'll move that item to consent. Item 2.5, sub twenty twenty four dash sixty two, Dutch Acres Edition, North Hillside and East Ninety-third Street North. Is there anyone from the commission that would like to hear this case? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this case? Saying none, we'll move that item to consent as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move for approval of 2.1, 2.4, and 2.5.
Okay, great, we have a motion and a second. Motion from Commissioner Joe Johnson and a second from Commissioner Blick. Any other questions or comments? Saying none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
And then I'd move for approval of 2.2.
Second.
I have a motion to approve 2.2 from Commissioner Joe Johnson and a second from Commissioner Miles. Any other questions or concerns? Saying none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstains? Bill, you need to abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, with an abstain from Commissioner Bill Johnson. All right, thank you. Now we go to the public hearing for vacation items. Item 3.1, vacation twenty twenty four dash fifty one, vacation request in the city for South Greenwich Road and East Harry Street. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to hear this item? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this item? Saying none, we'll move item 3.1 to consent. Vacation, item 3.2, vacation twenty twenty four dash fifty two, West MacArthur Boulevard and South Meridian Avenue. Is there anyone from the commission that would like to hear this item?
Mr. Chairman, I need abstain for this item.
And we will have that one as a separate vote as well. So anyone from the commission want to hear this item? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this item? Saying none, we will move that to consent, but it will require a separate vote due to the abstain. Item 3.3, vacation twenty twenty four dash fifty three, a vacation request for North Hillside Avenue and K two fifty four. Is there anyone from the commission that would like to hear this item? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this item? Saying none, we'll move item 3.3 to consent.
Move to approve agenda items 3.1 and 3.3.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Warren with a second from Commissioner Zimbalman for items 3.1 and 3.3 to consent. Any other questions or comments? Saying none, a call for a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Move to approve agenda item 3.2.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item 3.2 from Commissioner Warren with a second from Commissioner Zimbalman. Any questions or comments? Saying none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay.
Abstain.
And we have one abstain from Commissioner Bill Johnson. Motion passes thirteen zero one. Okay, public hearings, 4.1, conditional twenty twenty four dash two four two, to allow daycare at roughly North Pershing Avenue and North Oliver Avenue. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to hear this item? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this item? All right, we'll move item 4.1 to consent. Item 4.2, conditional twenty twenty four dash two four nine, this accessory apartment, thirty nine, West Thirty-ninth Street South and South Three Hundred Ninety-first Street West. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to hear this item? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this item? Saying none, we'll move item 4.2 to consent. Item 4.3, conditional use twenty twenty four dash two five six, single-use RV campground east of one, east of Sixtieth Street South and South One Hundred Forty-third Street East. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to hear this item? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this item? Okay, I see some hands. So 4.3, we will hear item, that case. Item 4.4, conditional twenty twenty four dash two five eight, oil and gas drilling on property, West Seventy-first Street South and South One Hundred Thirty-first, Thirty-fifth Street West. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to hear this item? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this item? I see a few hands, okay, great. So item 4.4, we'll move to consent. I'm sorry, to hear that case. And just real quick, backup, are the applicant agents available for both 4.3 and 4.4? They're here, okay, great. Item 4.5, CUP twenty twenty four dash three zero, a CUP amendment for East Central Avenue and North Woodlawn Boulevard. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to hear this item? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this item?
Yes.
We have a hand, and is the applicant agent present? Okay, great. So item 4.5 will be heard. 4.6, CUP twenty twenty four dash four zero, North Pinstemon Street and East Twenty-ninth Street North. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to hear this case? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this case? Saying none, we'll move item 4.6 to consent. 4.7, CUP twenty twenty four dash four one, entertainment establishment, West Twenty-ninth Street North and North Maze Road. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to hear this item? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this item? Saying none, we'll move item 4.7 to consent. Item 4.8, PUD twenty twenty four dash two four, entertainment establishment, West Twenty-first Street North and North Market Street. Is there anyone from the commission that would like to hear this case? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this case? See a couple of hands raised, okay, is the applicant agent present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Item 4.8 will be heard. Wow, page four, don't usually get four pages on agendas, so. Item 4.9, PUD twenty twenty four dash two five, zone change request for the northeast substation at roughly North Woodlawn Boulevard and East Twenty-first Street North. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to hear this case? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this case? Saying none, we'll move 4.9 to consent. Item 4, 4.410, zone twenty twenty four dash fifty two, zone change request for roughly West Second Street North and North Doris Street. Anyone on the commission like to hear this case? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this case? I see a hand, is the owner applicant agent here to be represented? We'll, we'll get, we'll get them on, we got some time. So item 4.10 will be heard. 4.11, zone twenty twenty four dash fifty four, zone change request for roughly North Hoover and West Robinson Street. Anyone on the commission like to hear this case? Saying none, is there anyone on the, in the public that would like to hear this case? I see a hand over in the corner. Is the applicant agent available for this item? Okay, another one we'll have to reach out to. Item 411 will be heard. Item 412, zone twenty twenty four dash fifty five, zone change in the city, Santa Fe Avenue and roughly East Thirteenth Street North. Anyone on the commission like to hear this case? Saying none, is there anyone in the public that would like to hear this case? Not seeing any hands, so we will move item 4.12 to consent. Last one, 4.13, zone twenty twenty four dash fifty six, zone change request for North Hillside and East Central Avenue. Anyone on the commission like to hear this case? Saying none, is there anyone from the public that would like to hear this case? And I see a hand raised, and are you the applicant agent as well? All right, so we will hear 4.13.
Motion to approve 4.1, 4.2, 4.6, 4.7, 4.9, and 4.12.
All right, we have a motion to approve those items from Commissioner Blick with a second from Commissioner Williams Bay. Any questions or comments? Saying none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, our next order of business, we recess to the Board of Zoning Appeals' agenda. And what did I do with that? It's way in the back, all right. So a quick little break on BZA. The first item is to approve the prior BZA meeting minutes. There were two absences, Clontz and Joe Johnson. So we have a motion from Commissioner McKay with a second from Commissioner Williams Bay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. And we have two absences. Okay, let the record reflect, Clontz and Joe Johnson abstain. Item two, BZA twenty twenty four dash seven five, it's a variance request because the staff is recommending denial, we will hear this case. So Brad, I believe this is yours, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you very much, Commissioner. My name is Brad Etherly, Senior Planner for MAPD. Today we're discussing case BZA twenty twenty four zero zero two, uh, seven five. Is that just me, or am I getting feedback? I'm hearing it, I'm good, okay, because I'm hearing it bad. All right, for this case, the applicant is requesting a variance on SF five, single-family residential zone property, to reduce the required separation of an accessory structure from a primary structure from three feet to one foot. According to the Unified Zoning Code, accessory structures that are not attached to the principal structure shall be located at least three feet from the principal structure, and the applicant would like to reduce the separation from three feet to one foot in order to install a raised beam hot tub. Little bit of surrounding property, if we can go to the zoning map. Properties to the northeast, south, and west are zoned SF five. Properties to the north and east are developed as single-family dwellings. Property to the west is a reserved drainage pond, and the property to the south is developed as a golf course. On June fifteenth, nineteen eighty-three, the subject site was platted as part of the Woodspring addition. There are no other zoning cases associated with the site. Going on to the five criteria, number one, that the request is unique to this property and was not created by the applicant. The applicant states that due to existing site restrictions and conditions, a variance has been requested to meet requirements of the owner, and the staff does not agree with the above statement, the applicant did not identify what restrictions, restrictions prevent the structure to be built according to the UZC. The applicant can move the accessory structure so that it is three feet from the principal structure. Number two, the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of the adjacent property owners or residents. The applicant states that the property improvements and larger hot tub plunge pool is being constructed in the area west of the structure. This area is screened from neighbors on north and south. This variance will not affect visual conditions of lake and golf course of either neighbor. And staff does agree with this statement, staff does not foresee the proposed hot tub structure to adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners. Number three, the strict application of the provisions of the code would constitute an unnecessary hardship on the applicant. The applicant states that the variance and clearance has been requested by owner to create comprehensive outdoor living space from the lanai to the hot tub area. Staff does not agree with the above statement, the difference between one foot and three feet should not constitute an unnecessary hardship on the owner. Number four, the variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, general welfare, or harmonious development of the community. The applicant states that no additional condition of the project will adversely affect community or neighborhood. Additionally, the construction of hot tub, which meets the Woodspring HOA covenant and restriction on materials and colors, will benefit the area. Staff does not agree with the above statement, the separation requirement is intended to promote harmonious development within the community. And number five, the granting of the variance will not be opposed to the general spirit of the, or, and intent of the code. The applicant states that the application for variance will give the owner the desired elements requested for site due to the limitations, setbacks, and natural conditions. Staff does not agree with the above statement, the separation requirement between structures does promote community, uh, continuity of development. If we can go to the site pics. This is a, kind of showing the, the site plan where the house is located there, and then the, um, kind of the northwest corner of the property where the, where the shaded area in blue would, where the pool would be in comparison to the house. Go to the next picture. Go to the next picture. So this is looking at where the pool is going to be constructed, this is kind of looking from the back of the property end towards where the house is and where the pool is actually being constructed. Next picture. And then this is kind of looking southwest-ish, uh, or, I'm sorry, kind of southeast-ish to the pool, um, where it's being constructed, and you can see, from what I understand, the pool will actually kind of come where this rebar is being placed, apparently, so there will be about a foot separation from, from the, uh, structure to the prime, primary structure of the house. Next picture. This is looking west into the front of the property, next picture. Looking east away from, next picture. This is looking north away from the back portion of the property where the pool will be, next picture. This is looking north from the front of the property, next picture. This is looking south from the back of the property, where the pool will be, next picture. This is looking south from the front of the property, next picture. This is looking west from the back, next picture. And that's all. Staff, the recommendation of staff is that the variance does not meet the five criteria required to grant a variance. Should the board determine that all five conditions necessary to the granting of the variance can be found to exist, it is recommended the variance is granted with conditions listed in the staff report. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
And any questions for staff? Commissioner Aldrich.
Brad, what prompted us to come to the BZA? Was it, uh, a permit issue, or?
So what happened apparently was- So what happened apparently was that during the building permit phase, while they were reviewing, while MABCD was reviewing the, the permit, they did not catch that the structure was going to be so close to the, uh, to the primary structure. And then once building started, construction started on the, on the, uh, pool, an inspection, uh, came out to, uh, someone came out for an inspection and realized the error, and they halted construction and, uh, and asked to get a variance at this point.
Wasn't there a site plan attached to the applicant, or the application of a permit?
That, that would, um, uh, that would make sense. I don't know, I haven't seen the building permit application, but apparently it was a mistake on the, on the MABCD's review.
Commissioner Nix.
So is, is there some possibility that the home would be damaged, or the integrity of the home would be in peril because we're two inches, two inches, two feet closer than what was supposed to be?
I would not be qualified to answer that question.
I mean, we're talking about two feet here, aren't we?
Correct. Commissioner Miles, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Saying none, is the applicant or agent available to speak on this? Hey, sir, you need to go to the podium, and you have up to ten minutes, give us your name and address.
Yes, sir, I'm the agent. Do you want my address, or do the address of?
For the record, we need your name and address.
Yes, sir, my name is Breck Barnhart. My address is six six five North Volusia. That'd be in Wichita, six seven two one four. The, uh, one element, is that all you needed from me?
For right now, but we'd like you to address the, the staff different reasons for the variance denial.
When we, uh, I am the landscape architect for Green Meadows to, for the record. I did the designs, there was a design provided for MABCD. At that point, we were using a previously provided design from the homeowner's original, uh, design and build process being completed by Hinson Construction. The pool and the area in regards to the, to the space was a much smaller hot tub. And in order to create a more comprehensive space in that raised area, as you saw in the pictures, we expanded the space to a, a nine by, um, thirteen hot tub, uh, to create that enlarged area. It is constricted on the west by the floodplain and, uh, two very large, uh, London plane trees, that's a, that's a Western Sycamore that you guys will probably be more familiar with. Because of that, instead of putting the pool on the ground, the whole application process became, or the design process became putting the pool at the same elevation as the raised lanai and the existing patio that is in there that you saw the pictures of. The variance, and this is actually attached to the house. The shotcrete, this is a concrete hot tub that we'll be installing here, exists in that small corner. Only about two foot of the corner of the house is involved in this attaching, but it attaches to the existing raised concrete patio in that process. So the variance is just for this two feet for this attached, uh, structure. I don't have.
So I'm gonna, uh, readdress Commissioner Aldrich's question. Did you submit a site plan showing the distance from the structure to the primary structure?
I, it was not on there, I do not believe that was on that design. It was just in the placement, and I had, typically we have the, and you can see the design shows the distances to property lines and, uh, to the structures. Not in that corner, though, it was not. I don't believe I had it on there.
Any commissioners have questions for the Commissioner Aldrich?
So basically, you started your construction, your forming, and everything else prior to the issuing of permits, correct?
Correct. That is correct, sir.
Yeah, it might have been a good idea to get the permit first before you.
We had the permit, we, I have the permit number, do you need that for record?
Good, my question was, is that you started the forming and construction and everything else prior to issuing of permits?
No, sir.
You're saying you had the permit first?
Yes, sir, we did.
And it needs to, oh, okay.
We have the permit, and, uh, I have the permit, I think I have it in my file over there, but I do have the permit. And we were awarded the permit, and the design was, um, was approved. The error, and I think I have that from, uh, it would have been on ten one twenty-four when the inspector came out for the setback in the bonding of the project, is when the actual red flag or the clearance came, that was when it became available, or was, and, uh, noticed. That would have been by Brian, uh, the inspector from MABCD.
Okay, I'm glad you clarified that, thank you.
Any other questions for the commission? Commissioner Warren.
Who this question goes to, I guess I'm looking for the harm here. Where, what is the, what is the concern of coming, uh, instead of having three foot, having one foot? What is the, what is the danger, and what are, what are we looking for?
I'm sorry, I was talking to legal counsel, could you repeat that, please?
I'm looking for the, the concern, I mean, yeah, we've, we've got, it calls for three foot, we're, we've got one foot. Why is that, does somebody tell me why that's a problem, and why we shouldn't go forward with this?
So, I'm not in the building group, but I've been around them for quite some time. I, I think normally an accessory structure might be something different than this, right? Might be a structure, garage, shed, some attached item to the house or detached. Three feet? There could well be something in the building code that requires three feet to have some separation, and possibly the fire code. Additionally, it gives some level of ability to have access for maintenance. Again, thinking of it being another walled structure. Beyond that, I, I'd like to be able to say, yes, I remember ten years ago when this was put into code, which it wasn't, it's been there forever. And it was because of blank, and I can't do that.
If I could, I'd like to add that, uh, in this case, I believe it's an instance where the zoning code is reflecting the building code. And so if you all grant th- this variance as requested today, they will still have to go through the building permit process, so that'll be a separate process that they've got to go through. But what we're dealing with now is a requirement in the zoning code that there be three feet of separation between an accessory structure and the primary structure.
Commissioner Aldrich.
And we have no issues with, uh, any easements, or sewer, water, gas, any of that, correct?
That is my understanding, according to reviewing the platting things, this is within the buildable area, and it's not encumbered by any other things other than this requirement for separation between structures.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bill Johnson.
Scott, clarify, if they've got a permit, you say they'll have to go back and get a permit?
I don't, I don't know to what extent MABCD will require that, but ultimately, we know that they have to have a permit. They say that they've got that now, but will they cause them to have to go back through a review? I, I don't know.
Have you received any word from MABCD related to that?
I have actually reached out to MABCD in regards to this, and their statements were, we needed this application to be fulfilled. And approved. Everybody's.
Got it.
And, and the only, the, the one thing I would like to add to this, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to overstep bounds, is this is attached to that raised space. It's not a separate accessory structure, swimming pools are accessory structures by the code, but we are attaching this to and raising the beam up, so there's no separation between these two items in this case.
Right. All right. Thank you, sir, stand by, oh wait, we have one more question for you.
Thank you.
Sir, what size, size is the hot tub?
We are, we have a nine by thirteen hot tub planned for this space right now.
And what is the depth of it?
It is a four foot depth, that is raised above the existing grade, sir.
Okay. Stand by, in case you will have to rebut, now we allow public comment. And then you'd have the opportunity to rebut if there were any, so stay close.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this? Yes, please come forward. Give us your name and address, and you will have up to three minutes.
Nancy George, ninety twenty-three East WoodSpring, it's my home.
Um, it's, I'm sorry ma'am, this is your home?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I speak still, or?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify.
I, I just wanted to clarify a couple things, what happened is first, um, Hinson Construction Company, they got a permit for the lanai and the area around it, and I actually have their permit that shows the pool and the drawing, and that it is within three feet of the house. So they got their permit approved. They started their construction on the fireplace outside in the lanai. And then, um, uh, Green Meadows, they went, they got their pool approved. And, um, when they were, already had part of it constructed, the city came out to approve another part of the lanai. And Tom Wagner was the city inspector that came out. And he said, you know, this is, I mean, in his words, he said, this is something that I really hate to even do. He said, because I don't see any problem with it, but he said, because of a fire code, a structure has to be within three feet from another structure, but he said, yours is all really one structure, and it's only a two foot area that is actually within that, uh, one, I mean, it's only two feet of it is within one feet, if that makes sense, just that one little tiny corner of it. And he said, so really, he said, you need to get a variance. And so I called him personally, and I said, should we tear the pool down, rebuild it? What is your opinion? And he said, his opinion was, I don't think there's any problem whatsoever for it passing, so I would go through the process and do the variance. So, my husband and I have had to wait two months, holding our construction, everything for us to do this, just because that was what was recommended to us from the city of Wichita. So, I mean, from, uh, the inspector, so I just wanted to add that. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, I don't like talking in front of people.
So you are the owner.
Uh huh.
Your time should have been included in that first ten minutes, but I allowed it because he didn't use all ten?
Oh, okay, that's fine.
You're fine, just want to make sure everybody knows what's going on.
Okay.
All right.
That's why we did the variance, it wasn't try to say, oh, we, you know.
Any questions for Mrs. George? Saying none, thank you. Now, just to be clear, any members of the public who are not applicant or agent on this who would like to speak on this item, this is your opportunity. Saying none, we'll return it back to the commission for consideration, comments, debate. What's our will? Commissioner Mater.
I would like to move that we approve this application.
And with that, does your motion include the conditions that staff is suggesting?
Based on the findings of the commission, of the staff, and, uh, conditions, uh, included.
Okay.
Okay, I think I heard it right at the end, that all, uh, your find that all five conditions have been met.
Yes, right. Okay, so we have a motion to approve, um, the variance request, and that all conditions have been met, and that the conditions that staff is suggesting of the conformance of the site plan and building permits, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, motion by Commissioner Mater, second by Commissioner Miles. Any other comments or questions? Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Variance is approved. All right. Next, uh, BZA, case number twenty twenty-four dash seventy-seven. This is a wall graphic in the central business district at South Main and East English. Again, because staff is recommending denial, we will hear this case. Christina.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner. This is case number BZA twenty twenty-four triple zero seventy-seven. The applicant's, uh, requests for variances include, um, increasing the maximum square footage of a temporary building sign from two hundred square feet to two thousand one hundred and twenty square feet, and to increase the maximum building coverage of a temporary building sign from twenty percent to thirty-one percent. The sign code allows temporary building signs to a total area of two hundred square feet. And the provisions outlined in the Wichita Sign Code limit the maximum time for sign installation to be thirty days. The proposed sign shall measure fifty-three feet by forty feet against a building facade. The facade is seventy-two feet by ninety-five feet in size. So this results in a sign that covers thirty-one percent of the building's facade. The applicant would like to place a sign on the building's east elevation facing North Market Street. So if you can see my mouse here, it would be on this elevation here. The purpose, according to the applicant, um, it is a desire Fidelity Bank, the property owner, to be granted a variance to allow for a perforated vinyl wall graphic to be installed on the east elevation of a building located at the property, um, listed there. The intent is for the wall graphics to be visible from InTrust Bank Arena during upcoming national events, to be held there during February and March. This is a temporary installation to be up mid-January through the end of June twenty twenty-five, at which time the graphic shall be removed. If we take a look at the, um, adjacent properties, property to the north, um, is developed with a financial institution that is listed on the local, state, and national registers of historic places. To the south, we have a, uh, different financial institution. To the east, um, we have a parking lot, and to the west, um, is the Wichita Library, which is on the state and national registers of historic places. There are no zoning cases associated with this property. So let's go through some of the criteria for granting a variance. The applicant states that the variance request arises from the conditions set forth by the city sign code, that any wall signs exceeding twenty percent of the building elevation or four hundred square feet maximum in the CBD zoning district shall not be permitted except by variance approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Condition created by neither the property order nor the applicant. Staff is not in agreement with this analysis. The rules and regulations set forth by the Wichita Sign Code differ from conditions that prompt a variance. For the mer, the applicant has not described how this, uh, this situation is unique to the property in question. So, it's criteria number two. The applicant states that granting this variance request will not adversely affect adjacent property owners. The graphics position on the building structure will face, will only face other commercial properties, will not be illuminated, and is not near any residential uses. And staff is in agreement with the above statement. As a non-illuminated sign, it will not cause light pollution onto other properties. Criterion three. The strict application of the provisions of the sign code would constitute an unnecessary hardship on the applicant. The applicant states that Fidelity Bank and its acting agent, Luminous Neon LLC, field of the sign code restrictions constitute hardship for the following reasons. Allowing the graphic at the size proposed would make it visible for patrons and participants of two national events, the US National Figure Skating Camp Championships, and the NCAA Men's Basketball Tournament, that will bring many visitors to the city's downtown area during the time requested. Placing a graphic of this nature at allowable size would be very small against the six thousand eight hundred and forty square foot building surface, and not be legible to the targeted audience. The graphic's primary intent is to serve as a positive message for the entire city. The Fidelity Bank logo, which we can see, um, on the screen here, is just a very small portion of the overall graphic design. And staff agrees with the above statement. It is staff's opinion that the sign, that the sign has a maximum square footage allowed by the sign code that will look disproportionate to the building's large elevations. Criterion four. The applicant states for this one, it is our opinion that the granting of the variance request will not have any negative impact on the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, general welfare, or harmonious development of the community. In fact, the granting of the variance, uh, will create a positive effect on the community and visitors to the downtown area during the requested time period. This type of sign will be a signature statement during the national events. And staff agrees with above statement, it is staff's opinion that granting of the variance will not have an adverse effect on the aforementioned items. The applicant's sign aims to promote the company and the city of Wichita as a whole, which is considered to be a gain to the community. The last criterion, uh, the granting of the variance will not The last criterion, the granting of the variance will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the sign code. The applicant states that the granting of the variance desired will not be in opposition to the general spirit and intent of the sign code, as this will only be a temporary display, not a permanent one. Staff does not agree with the above statement. The Wichita Sign Code allows for temporary signage for up to 200, or for up to 30 days, and it allows up to 200 square feet of signage or 20% of a building elevation, whichever is less. The request to increase the square footage and increase the allotted time for display are exponentially larger than what the code allows. It is staff's opinion that these requests are thus in opposition to the spirit and intent of the sign code. The legal considerations for this case, they were discussed in the previous case, so I won't go over those. But it is staff's, staff finds that the requested variance for the increase in sign area does not meet the five criteria required to grant a variance. Should the board determine that all the five conditions necessary to the granting of the variance shall be found to exist, we have the, it is a recommendation of the secretary that the following variance for the increase in sign area is granted with the considerations listed in your staff report. So let's go through some of the site photos. As you can see here, this is what they're proposing for their graphic. Next picture, please. This is looking east towards the site. This is off of Main Street. Next slide, please. This is looking west towards the site. This is where the applicant is proposing to place the sign. Next slide, please. This is looking north towards the site. Next slide, please. This is looking east away from the site. Next slide, please. This is looking south away from the site. Next slide, please. This is looking west away from the site. That concludes my site photos, and with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Christina. I have a question here from Commissioner Aldrich.
Yeah, Christina, this is strictly for advertisement purposes for a privately-owned company, correct?
Correct.
Well, the thing where the location where they're wanting to put the temporary sign doesn't even face the InTrust Arena. It just, does it?
It does.
It does. It faces east.
Okay.
Yes, it's on the east elevation facing east.
Okay, because I was first looking at that, it looked like it was just coming off of with the Main Street there.
Yeah, it's on the market side.
But still, that's and the maximum right now was 200 square foot, and they're wanting to do 2,120 foot, correct?
Yes. Any other questions? I'm sorry. Commissioner Bullock.
Kind of. This question's for staff. If this is a temporary sign in the sign code, is there a time limit right now is established for temporary signage?
It's 30 days.
30 days.
30 days. So if they wanted to, they could actually run this for 30 days, tear it down, and then do it again for another 30 days without having to go through this process?
I believe there's a 30-day wait between. So something like this, we would actually permit is a permanent sign.
Would be a permanent sign. Okay.
Correct, even though it's, we know it's not.
Did I see another hand? Commissioner Hicks.
Well, it seems to me that, I mean, I know it's an oversized sign, but and maybe we all know it's Fidelity's sign, sort of. I don't know whether a visitor to the city is going to recognize who Fidelity is and who they are. To me, it's more of a promotional sign, something that sort of speaks to us as a, as a community. And from my way of thinking, even though it's not in compliance, it seems to me that it's a good use of space, and promotes our city. I don't know why we'd be opposed to it.
Did I see Commissioner Williams, but then I'll come back to Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, Christina, is there any reason that they gave for wanting six months for the sign?
They did not provide that in their essay.
Commissioner Joe Johnson?
Yeah, I think this is a wonderful idea, and supporting the two major conventions we have here, the basketball and the ice skating. And it's very tastefully done. I'd like to see others in downtown do the same thing and really make Wichita come alive. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll bring the applicant agent forward to present your case. You have up to 10 minutes. Please give us your name and address for both of you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Aaron Bastian. I'm representing Fidelity Bank, the applicant, and address at Fidelity is 100 East English, Wichita, Kansas 67202. And our agent?
My name is Chuck Carson with Luminous Neon Signs, 327 Hydraulic, Wichita.
And, you know, what we're requesting today is really a mix of a sign variance that allows us to put up this temporary sign that is a positive message. It, you know, it does speak to the the two events that we have that are, I think it's fantastic that we get these big national events here in the U.S. Figure Skating Championships and the NCAA Tournament, and we just want to be a part of supporting that. There was a question I heard earlier about the timing, et cetera. What we're trying to do is, is put this sign up once, leave it up for the figure skating and the tournament, and then we would take it down. And that's, that's why it's a longer than normal request. If we, if we tried to stay within that 30-day window, it would be cost prohibitive for us to put up the sign, take it down, put it back up again, and take it down a second time. But certainly take any questions if I can help.
I just have an observation for you. If you can go back to the site plan or the site map, the aerial. Just an observation on this. That building you're looking at, you have three empty lots right on the next, the next block over is Topeka. You have three huge buildings that's going to block it from InTrust Bank. The only way you're going to be able to see this is if you're standing on English Street, just because of the big, large buildings. You have two on the north side, one on the south side. You do also own the building down there on Waterman, where Grow is, on that parking garage, and you have it east-facing. You actually have a better opportunity of seeing the front entrance of InTrust Bank Arena and being able to see that better than where the location that you're looking at now.
We did discuss that. I appreciate the comment. We did discuss that. We settled on this option, given the complexities of trying to attach it to the side of that parking structure. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Zimbalman.
The comments from the staff say if we do approve this, it would, they would recommend just a period of 70 days. Are you okay with that? Is that long enough to cover the two events?
If we could get 90 days, that would work, we think that would work for our needs, recognizing that's 20 days longer than what staff recommends.
Just to clarify, did your request indicate 90 days from the beginning?
The original quest was for six months.
For six months, okay.
But if I could ask that we do get extended a little bit beyond, like Aaron said, the 70 days that staff recommends. The skating championships actually start on January 21, with the March Madness ending on March 22. So that's kind of where that 90-day period is, if we were allowed to keep it up through those two events.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, please stand by, gentlemen. See if there's any public comment. At this time, take it out to the public. Is there any public comments on this case? Seeing none, you have nothing that you need to rebut. So thank you for your time. We'll bring it back to the commission for consideration. I would just like to echo comments made by Commissioner Joe Johnson that, you know, I understand the spirit of the sign code, and the two variance denials from staff spoke to that, at least the number five did. And again, I, to echo Commissioner Johnson, the spirit of Wichita, I think, is what Fidelity is trying to do with this temporary signage, and to highlight the opportunity on the national stage for Wichita, and showing that community spirit is a good thing. So, did I see a hand over here? Commissioner Mater.
I just need to recuse myself from this. I just realized Luminous Neon is a tenet of mine in Wichita.
All right. With that, seeing no other comments or questions, I will move to approve the variance request that all five conditions have been met, and that the sign shall only be installed for a maximum of 90 days. Yes, sir.
Didn't mean to interrupt, but I need to point out that on condition number three, which I assume you're going to get to, it mentions the Sedgwick County Sign Code. That's incorrect. It'd be the sign code of the city of Wichita. Just wanted to make a note. Thank you.
So back to my motion. And item two, the sign shall be in general conformance with the approved elevation site plan. And condition, consideration number three, the applicant shall obtain all permits necessary from the MABCD to construct the three building wall signs, and the sign shall be erected within one year. The approved shall conform to all other applicable requirements of the Sedgwick County Sign Code unless a separate variance or adjustment is granted.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Miles. Any other questions?
To clarify, that was the City of Wichita Sign Code as opposed to the Sedgwick County.
And you just tried to correct me, and I still got it on.
Thank you.
So friendly amendment to my motion, then. Thank you. Second still stands, Commissioner Warren.
Oh, this would be to amend the motion or a substitute motion, but just in case there may be some weather problems, could we extend that to 100 days?
What would the weather conditions, I mean, would that mean it got torn down?
Might keep it from being put up because of weather conditions or other issues? Just give a cushion?
Well, I thought the 70 to 90 was the extension. That was fair.
Yeah, but wouldn't that clock start from the time they installed it?
Start installing.
Right. Yeah, so from the time they put it up, it'd be 90 days. So. I think allowing the extra 20 is sufficient. So. Any other questions or comments? Do I see something from Legal?
Mr. Chair, was that a substitute motion?
He asked if there would be a friendly amendment. I said no.
Right. So are you, are you making a substitute motion, or are you just?
He just wanted me to do it, and I said, no, I'm fine with 90. So. All right. Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Before we, I want to abstain. Thank you. Before I end this, I want to ask Legal for consideration, not for today, but to take this under and maybe report back. When there are variance agreements, do we have to hear the staff presentation? Christina did a great job, but there were only two in disagreement out of the five. Did we need to hear all the three where they agreed with the variance? It seems like that was unnecessary. If they agree, why do we need to hear it? So think that through, and maybe we can talk at it a later time. All right. With that, I will adjourn the BZA board meeting, and we will now move back to MAPC, and I believe we're on item 4.3. Is that correct? 2.3? Oh, yes, that's right, Indian Hills. Right? Thank you. Indian Ridge. All right, thank you. Greg, it's your floor.
Good afternoon, Greg Sharon, planning staff here to present the subdivision 2024-59, Indian Ridge Endil Second Edition subdivision. If you go to next screen, please. This is a one-step plat for a 26-lot residential subdivision. Next screen, please. If this plat looked familiar, it was presented as the same layout as you see on the screen. If you go to the next screen. It was presented earlier this year, but was denied, and the applicant has resubmitted under a new application, so therefore it's a brand-new hearing case that will need to be presented. If you go to the next screen, please. This subdivision plat, in front of you, like I said, it's a 20-lot subdivision. There will be a waiver that will be needed. Waiver of lot depth to width ratio for Lot 3, Block 3, and Lot 3, Block 1. Just for time's sake, I won't go through all the staff comments. The comments that need to be addressed mainly have to do with some platters text that need added, and also item E, the street names will deemed to be changed to comply with City of Wichita street naming standards. I note for the record that I did receive two letters, emails, concern regarding this subdivision case. The first letter was from Cindy Howe, Howie, and it was concerning water distribution and water availability for wells and also for drainage, which I should note that the county stormwater management has approved the drainage plan with the addition of one easement, and it's my understanding that that easement has been included on the final plat. And the second email that was sent to me was from Sue and Mark Vaughn. And that also raised some concerns regarding wells and availability of water. And I had four of those to you and an email. If you did not get those letters, I have some copies here that I can pass out if you need a copy. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Greg. Questions from the commission? Mr. Aldrich.
I have a question regarding the GSI. What happens if the agent or applicant doesn't want to change the street names that apparently GSI determines that may or may not be suitable for, for the American public?
Right, yeah. Since it doesn't meet the street standards, I wouldn't forward the plat to the common council final review until they satisfy the city's street standards.
The street names on here is tribal street, tribal court, lawyer. How was that offensive to, to anybody?
That, like I said, it's the policy of the Wichita GIS street naming conventions, and they had determined that those names were offensive and requested to be changed.
And how do we put a how do we revisit that, I guess, if you will, to, to make that determination? I mean, it's, again, it's getting into wokeism, and I think we've gone overboard with that quite a bit. So some people don't, don't like Washington or Lincoln, you know, or Kennedy. So, you know, I think at some point, I think we've gotten, gotten a little crazy, and I think it needs to be, be looked at.
Right. And I saw the applicant or the agent raise his hand, so he might be able to address that issue. Because he's been in talks with GIS department about street names, I believe.
There's still a lot of schools out there that, you know, they have their mascot, the Warriors or something, so.
Right.
All right.
Any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, we'll bring the applicant or agent present. Give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to 10 minutes, please. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Phil Meyer with Baughman Company, agent consultant for the applicant. This is a very unique project. One that I haven't done quite like this before. So the surveyor on this project still is Smith &amp; Oaks. The engineer that did the drainage plan would do the street and plans as ASM Engineering. Baughman Company has served as a consultant to help the as a consultant to help the developer get this plat approved. This plat was in front of Planning Commission previously, went through several deferrals, went through a zone change first, which was denied, which would they would have tried to do one acre lots. So now they are meeting this zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations and doing two acre lots on this side as a minimum. Planning Commission recommended strongly that they dig some more wells on this, which the applicant failed to do, which they realize is a mistake. So when we sat down and talked to them the first time, I told them, the first thing we got to do is go get some more wells. Planning Commission wanted to get comfortable there was enough water out here. So we went out and we dug two more wells. So we've done three wells on this 26 lot plat total. A year ago, we did a well that was 80 foot deep, had 25 gallons per minute on it. The we dug two more wells in November of this year. That one was 130 foot deep. It has a 20 gallons per minute. One was 140 foot deep. It has 20 gallons per minute. There's two subdivisions to the north of this. One is Hedge Creek Estates. That's a mile north at 45th. That has got multiple wells. Well, it's a 30 lot plat. So it's got 30 wells. Some of them are 80 foot deep, and then half of them are about 100 to 130 foot deep. So we're matching what's happened to the north already. And across the street from Hedge Creek is the original Indian Ridge development. And again, it's got wells in it, basically from 60 to 80. There's a couple 90 and 100 foot deep wells in there. All those subdivisions have had water. They've not had an issue with water. They've been issued certificate of occupancy permits from M A B C D. So this all, so we're up here with what I'm talking about for this subdivision here. And here's Indian Ridge over here. The applicant has agreed also. So they do a developers agreement with everybody that buys a lot, and the buyer and the seller both sign this document. It's six, eight pages long. In that, they're going to add three things in into that document, which we are considering water conservation factors. One, if the buyer wants to dig a well prior to purchasing the lot, and it does not produce a minimum of 10 gallons a minute, they will release them from the obligation to purchase that lot. If they've dug the well and it doesn't produce 10 gallons a minute, they'll purchase it back. They are reducing the amount of water on the lot that can be irrigated just around the house, 50 foot section around the house that can be cool or warm season, but they can't irrigate more than that. So they're reducing the amount of area that somebody could irrigate. They are strongly recommending to buyers that they do water softeners and reverse osmosis systems. That will help reduce if there's any sulfate in the water. That helps through reverse osmosis, helps solve that problem, and could ultimately be a condition of M A C B M A B C D as they permit that. So when I first started this, and I knew there was concerns from the neighbors about the amount of water. And again, we've got three wells, 25 gallons a minute, 20, and 20. For you to visualize, and I had to go through this myself as I was trying to figure out, is is water a concern here? If you got a well that produces 10 gallons a minute, and we're doing twice that much, but 10 gallons a minute, in one minute, you've got 10 one gallon bottles of water sitting up here in front of this. In an hour, you got 600 one gallon bottles of water. In 12 hours, you got 7,200 gallons of water. In 24 hours, you got 14,400 gallons of water. There is adequate water out here to serve this subdivision. So I'm hoping the Planning Commission won't have fear to approve this, that there won't be adequate water, because there is. And I'm stating that by the developments that have happened a mile north of this. For G S I, the street names, that's something we don't want to fight about. So I'd rather have the vote of all the planning commissioners than worrying about how we name the streets. The developers did reach out to G I S or G I S, and we've agreed on street names. For the main road, it would be Indy Street. The cul-de-sac here would be Indy Court. And this street stub over here would be 36th Street North. One step further, the developer is willing, if there's Planning Commission prefers today, so we're not doing controversy, we're willing to rename the subdivision. Saddle Ridge at Andale is what we can do instead of Indian Ridge. We chose the Indian, they chose the Indian Ridge playing off of the high school. It is the Andale Indians. That is their mascot. It's a very, very proud community of their high school. They support the the school and the the Indians and their sporting activities. So that's why they went with that name. They are willing to go to Saddle Ridge at Andale if that helps planning commissioners. And with that, we've already called G I S, and we would use Saddle Ridge Street. We would use Saddle Ridge Court, and we would stick with 36th Street North over here. And with that, I am going to stop and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Meyer? Commissioner Aldrich?
Yeah, I've got more of a statement, I guess. Phil, I'd like to, first of all, thank you and the applicant for doing the other test wells. That was my biggest concern, whether or not there was enough quality and quantity of water out there. And you've done that along with a couple other other items, you know, so I just want to thank you, thank you both for being proactive on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blick?
I don't see myself as a water expert, besides just drinking it. But I have a question about this, about the wells. I'm looking at every single well, when it was certified and when it was completed, the test, it was done in November's and December. I know that usually the farmers aren't really watering in November and December and pulling out the ground in the surrounding fields. Could you see that to be an impact of when the study was done versus being done in the spring, summer, or fall, when the agricultural wells are actually pumping water out also at the same time?
I do not. About 200 feet, 100 feet immediately west of this development here, you're going to find the Cow Skin Tributary. So all the water is flowing from east to west, heading to that Cow Skin Tributary, which is just sitting over here. That goes north, loops around, and heads back south again eventually. We were hoping to get well three. So well one was the one that's dug in 23. We were hoping to do both of these when it was dry. Unfortunately, it started raining in November before we could get out there to do it. We've always, part of the reason the developer was so stubborn or obstinate the first time is they always knew there was enough water out here, and they were comfortable that there was water. And they don't, they don't want to develop 26 lots and have a water issue at a later date. They know the water is adequate, and it's going to be good. And I went over the quantity of waters with you. I mean, if you're if you're producing 1,400 gallons of water a day out of a well, you're, and that's at 10 gallons a minute. We're doubling that, but what we found at 20. So I'm being long-winded to answer your question, but we are not concerned about running out of water here. And this is shale. Tim Wagner with M A B C D is here. So he has permission to throw his hand up at you if I say stuff that he disagrees with. But this shale has multiple layers. And the good thing about shale, and I talked to a geologist about this, the good thing about shale is it does replenish quickly. So that's, he wasn't too concerned about the replenishing part, which I think is your question. During drought or during summer where irrigation wells are being used more, are we going to have a problem? My answer is no.
Commissioner Clons?
So kind of piggybacking off that question, the wells were only monitored for 24 hours. Do you feel like that's sufficient time to stress that aquifer?
That's standard testing for wells that are done, yes, as the industry standard tests that they do.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Saying none. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Please stand by. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this? Please give us your name and address, and you have up to three minutes. Welcome.
My name is Doug Wager. I live at 24327 West 37th Street, in the center of this development. And I have concerns about the subdivision. I currently have water flow issues with one of my wells. We purchased the property in 2015 with no issues. It wasn't until 2021 that we started seeing the surge causing us to lose pressure. Since then, the runtime before it starts to draw air and surge has gotten shorter and shorter, around 10 minutes. I sent in a video clip. I was wondering if that if that was able to be played.
Is it longer than your time allowed?
20 seconds.
Okay. Do we have it? Keep talking. Okay.
So this is my well, and this is what happens when it surges. It's running. It'll go for about nine to 10 minutes, and then it'll actually suck air. And then I did this test during the November flow test that they were doing. That's test well two, 500 feet from my property. And then once it gets a little bit more water, it'll actually surge again, and before it goes dry, I have to sit and wait 10, 15 minutes for it to come back. So I do question the amount of water that's out there right now. In regards to this development, I have a couple questions and concerns. In the previous rounds of the development, you guys requested additional wells to prove water availability and quality. But the well log, well logs appear to show the opposite. So test well one, to our west, flowed 25 G P M December 23, and it only flowed 10 G P M this round during the flow test. Test wells two and three had to be drilled at 130 feet and then 140 feet on the other one, and they didn't even find water until they were 72 feet below the ground. Our static water level at our our well, 500 feet from that test well, is 31 feet below the ground. They didn't hit water until they were 72 feet below. And I guess if if you have to drill 13 stories below the ground to find water, how available is it? And if everybody's, the neighborhood's wells are at 80 feet, and they're drilling 130 foot wells, what happens to the existing neighborhood? The other question was, what was the quality of the water being pumped from 130 feet deep? That was it tested to be safe? To our knowledge, all the layer, all the water below the 86 foot layer of green shale is unsafe due to the high sulfate levels. When we bought our property, the seller told us there's an 86 foot well that's right here. And he said that it failed its water quality test because of high sulfate, and we couldn't use the water to irrigate our our yard or water our animals because it would kill the grass. And so I shared with you my property title transfer report from Tim Wagner on 1015, where he recommended not to use that well due to water quality. I also shared with you my safe yield evaluation from the groundwater management district, stating that this was limited water area and a new well may or may not yield adequate quality or quantity. I guess just.
Yeah, wrap up your comments, please.
I'm just looking for some reassurance that the addition won't deplete the water on our properties, the neighbors' properties. There isn't a buyback plan in the covenant provided by the developer for the surrounding properties if they take our our water. How will the existing future residents be protected if adequate water is not available and it becomes a health and safety issue?
Thank you, sir. Next speaker? Yeah, I'm sorry. We have a question for you, Mr. Wagner. Wagner?
I know this has probably been asked 10 times, but we got 10 different answers. So how far away is the rural water?
Boundary line is a half mile to the east of the development. The water line that would service this is St. Marx, and to my knowledge, that's five miles or so. No, St. Marx is to the southeast, and they asked about it. And the answer they got was they would have to add a pump to get the pressure they needed to this area and the existing or the additional cost they didn't want to put into it.
Thank you. Next speaker? You have three minutes. Name and address, please, and welcome.
Jared Schneider, 3400 North 247. This property here. Our first question is the stormwater drainage that Sedgwick County has still approved does not show any structures leading off of these two terraces dumping into their drainage easement. They have been approved by Sedgwick County, but Sedgwick County also approved drainage plans for the developer on subdivision between 135th or on 135th Street between 21st and that flooded the neighborhood along 135th in 2007. The homeowner was bought out by the developer for the damages done to it and had to be relocated. So mistakes are made by both developers and by drainage here. So no, we need to put something in here. Kansas Department of Water still hasn't been contacted about these two ponds that were illegally put in. No investigation on the pit silo in the house that is buried in here that they burnt, whether it contained asbestos, and if they're going to contaminate more ground or the water when they move that. Water is still the main concern. As Doug said, in test well number two, the static water level dropped 23 feet in their 12 hour pump period. And also, the wells are considerably deeper than any of the neighboring wells. And so they will continue to receive water long after we run out on ours. D W R, I contacted them. They show the same concerns of the shale bed and that far of a drop on this second test well. Like you said, this water conservation factorization that they have does not protect any other homeowners that are originally there. So they don't buy my house back when I run out of water. No water samples have been given. You know, I asked for a Doug kind of covered all my stuff. I asked for an evaluation maybe on on the wildlife in here. We got cut off from a 20 acre patch that we farmed from the state or from the city of Wichita, because there was evidence of a spotted skunk. There was no, there was no actual sighting of it, but they saw evidence. So the city of Wichita yanked that away from us, took that farm ground back and put it in a reservation. So I just asked, there's a lot of wildlife that runs in between here, and that we do a little bit more research before we go and damage that habitat. You know, the there's approximately 200 or 298 homes in the city of Andale, and in these couple subdivisions here, all south of Andale, there's 95 homes. And that's kind of because Sedgwick County's made it easy to hurry up, put in a dirt road, tell the applicant to drill some wells, and we don't have to service their sewer, their water. It takes away from the tax revenue from the town, from the town, which kind of helps keep everything alive in Andale.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Schneider? Saying none. Thank you. Next You have up to three minutes. Give us your name and address. Welcome.
My name is Sheila Hertel. I live at 24124 West 37th. So I'm right across the street here from the development they're having. I have a mini farm, which I raise many donkeys, many horses. Last year in Hayesville, I'm sure a lot of you heard that one of the lady's donkeys got shot because they built on, like they're trying to do here with us. I depend, I raise my donkeys for supplemental insurance. I'm a recent widow and on social security, so I depend on this. The water that everyone's talking about, I'm highly concerned because I have to fill up a 600 gallon tank for my donkeys and for my horses. And just like with Doug's, when my water goes for a period of time, it bogs down. I did have a contractor out two years ago, and they cannot dig any deeper because of sulfate that's under my ground. That means I would have to totally redo my water well and bring it up closer to the house, which would cost me probably a fortune. So while these guys are trying to make money, we're over here losing money. It's costing us more money the more houses you put in around there. You know, even if they did a five acre lot, but like the developer said, we can't make no money if we do five developers. So instead, they want to cost us money? That's unfair to us that's been here and worked hard for what we So instead they want to cost us money? That's unfair to us that's been here and worked hard for what we have. So I'm asking today for you guys to really consider approving this, you know, on our sake. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Hertel? Saying none, thank you. Last call. Anyone else? Is there someone? Okay, great. Again, up to three minutes. Name and address, and welcome.
My name is Julie Wager. I'm at 24327 West 37th Street North. I also live in a little cutout in the middle of this division. Regarding the amount of water that's available, the average lawn irrigation requirement is one to two inches per week. To provide your lawn with one inch of water, it takes little over a half a gallon per square foot of lawn. To irrigate 40,000 square feet of lawn, which is half of one of these properties, it would take 20,000 gallons of water per week or 2,800 gallons per day. Take this number times 26 properties, and they'll be using almost 73,000 gallons of water per day just to irrigate their lawns. One inch per week. That kind of water usage may be more acceptable in the city where there's guaranteed water or where the rural water district is usable. But it seems irresponsible to me that we're going to use that kind of water to irrigate lawns in the middle of rural farmland to have a city neighborhood in the middle of the country. That's all.
Hey, any questions for the speaker? Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? You have up to three minutes. Name and address, and welcome.
Thank you. I live right here. 24310 West 37th North. My name is Raymond Roser. I bought the place in 2008, but I'm here to talk about the quality of the water that we have to deal with out there. I'm on my third pressure tank. I'm on my second softener, and I've had to replace my RO once. And now since Indian Ridge one went in, my filters last less than six months on my RO. So the, the, the nitrate level is high out there. And 26 houses, all 26 of them will need a complete captured water system because the water is undrinkable, straight from the ground. That's all there is to it. I can't say how much a test well will produce, but the water tables are definitely dropping. There's no guarantee that there is millions of gallons of water available that will be needed to provide for these 26 homes. Their test wells, 20 gallons per minute, but that, that's no guarantee there's enough water. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was, I think that's all I have. Can't recall it right now.
We have a question for you. Commissioner Zimmerman.
So I'm going to ask you, assuming everybody on this map doesn't, doesn't have good water, doesn't have enough water. You got a water district on the map. Why won't they come and talk to you guys?
That I do not know. I don't know if anyone's requested it from our neighborhood. If they would bring rural water to this addition, I would buy it. I would, I would sign up with rural water and just keep my wells for gardens and yards and whatever.
Any other questions? Saying none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker? Going once. Have up to three minutes. Name and address, and welcome.
Hi, I am Laura Reichard. I live at 24630 West 37th Street North. And-
Yeah, sorry, we lost the map.
But that's okay. I imagine, I mean, there's a lot of us here, the neighbors to this place. And if you want us to keep coming up and telling you how it's not a good idea, then we'll just keep coming. But I've had the water struggles myself. I've lived there for over 20 years. We've dug three wells and got one that was usable out of the three. The one that we started with probably shouldn't have been hooked up because it was off the charts hard. If you go down too low, you get below the green shale, you're in the blue. It's high in sulfates. It stinks. It's, it's just not great. And being there for over 20 years, I just had a well that's been going in our pool facility for years without issue, and it's pumping dirt now. So there's problems. And I'm assuming it's because of all the development. So, I mean, it's, it is not just one or two neighbors. I think it's kind of a thing out there with all of us. So I think we all have the studies to show it. Also, you know, with the floodplain out there, we've got the special flood hazard area. I'm in it. So I'm not real excited about having more runoff. And it's kind of hard to trust that it'll be taken care of because man usually fails when it comes to trying to battle nature. So I have some anxiety about that, too. Can't think of anything else. Any questions for me?
Yeah, any questions for the speaker? Saying none, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Next speaker? Name and address, and you have up to three minutes, and welcome.
Hello, I'm Mark Vaughn. I live at 24220 West 37th, which is right there. I did write a letter in preparation for this meeting that I sent to you. I have some additional comments since then. On well log one that they drilled last year, the report indicated a static water level of 24 feet. But when they did their pump test a year later, the static water level is now 34 feet. So that makes me wonder, well, what's really going on with the water table? Also, I would have liked to have seen a, a water analysis done on the water they pumped out to know if they were in, had high sulfates or not, whether the water was even usable. And then my last comment is Jared ran out of time, so he asked me to inform you. He drilled a well just right here south of well two on 8724. And they went 60 feet and never encountered any water at that point, and then they decided to stop. So I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions for the speaker? Saying none, thank you, sir. Next speaker? Going once. You have up to three minutes. Name and address, please, and welcome.
I'm Kenny Winiger, 3542 North 247th. I am the property owner on this place. That well he just said, we drilled it right there. Premier well drilled it. Alan Stroud. We went 60 feet. No sand. We got a permit. We heard so much water out here, why not put a sprinkler up? I'm a farmer. We had it permitted. We had it witched. We had a possibility. We were going to have to put more than one well of multiple wells. We got done drilling the first one. I have pictures where he takes that and puts it out on the ground. No sand. If you got no sand, you got no infiltration of water. I said, Alan, do you want to move over here? He looked at me, hell no. Last thing, this got voted down May 24th, seven to four. This whole thing is a lot of time. Same song, new verse. They can come in here and talk about 20, 20 gallons a minute. Good, do it now. Come back another year. Go over here to Indian Ridge. Go up here. He said flow's coming this way. This is not Andale. Andale's Andale. You got city cops, city water, city sewer. One of the developers has been in Andale, and he did not get put into the city. But he was outside. He was outside the city, but he wanted to put a dirt road in, and then he asked the city to give him water and sewer. It's a money plot. You allow this happen, and you're more worried about road names, you need to be worried about shutting it down. Back in 97, you guys started, they put five acre lots around all these fields. And the city changed it because they knew they were scavenging on all these fields. We got another problem. You allow this addition, and you'll have another one here, 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 here. Eliminate it.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Saying none, thank you, sir. Next speaker? Going once? Going twice? Bringing it back to the commission for consideration? Oh, yes, thank you. I'm sorry. Bring it back to the applicant agent for rebuttal. You'll have up to two minutes.
So we have this proposed plat meets your subdivision regulations. M A B C D has procedures in place for onsite sewer systems, onsite water systems. There's testings that they go through as they go through that process for each one of those. We meet the comprehensive plan with the two acre lot subdivision at this location. My argument is we meet the subdivision regulations. And I know this is a tough one for the planning commission to look at, but we meet the sub regs. We have proved that we have water there. I know there's concerns about that, but they're concerns of fear. I don't think the planning commission should approve or deny a plat based on fear. You got to base it on the facts that are there. And we have met your sub regs. We have gone and done additional tests. As we go through the process with M A B C D, if one of these lots doesn't have, doesn't meet Sedgwick County standards, then it's not going to get permitted, and there's not going to be a house on that lot. So I look at this. I know this is tough, and I know it's emotional for the neighbors. How many times have you approved a plat when people are up here going, there's drainage problems, there's drainage problems? You can't do that. There's drainage problems. You're going to flood me. Well, we've met what Sedgwick County requires and what we do on those plats. This is the same subject. We're just discussing water over drainage. With that, I'll stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Saying none. Oh, wait, we do. Commissioner Aldrich.
Phil, can you address the water quality concerns? Have you got any reports back on that yet?
We did not test the water quality. You are required by M A B C D to do a water quality. You still have the water quality quantity test to permit? No, you got rid of that? They used to have a water quality and quantity test they did on each well. Again, I go back to you a mile up the road or a half a mile to Indian Ridge and one mile at the Hedge Creek Estates. All those have passed at that time. So but there is not a water quality test anymore that Sedgwick County requires. There was, and it's just been within the last three, five years that that's been eliminated.
Any other questions from the commission? Saying none, thank you. Bring it back to the commission for consideration and discussion. Commissioner Nix?
So on the farm, we call that water skunky water. I think everybody knows what I'm talking about that lives out in the country, particularly in that area. So there should be some conversation about the quality of water. As far as the quantity of water, you know, some of us that grew up on the farm used to be able to dig a post hole and hit water. And, and now how far down do we have to go? And how much further may we have to go? And it's not an infinite source. I mean, eventually, look at Cheney Lake. I mean, the water level continues to drop. And so I think it's a huge and legitimate concern from my view.
I saw two hands. One hand over here. Commissioner Warren? Or did you have one, Mr.?
Water's going to be a problem no matter where you're at. I mean, Cheney Lake's not proven to be a, a great situation right now. So city of Wichita is on, on that. I'm not willing to put a moratorium on construction of new homes near Andale. I mean, that's, if, if that becomes the standard, then we're not going to be building anywhere. And I, I, I think that you, you people are going to have to be conservative with water. Going to have to pay the price. I don't know, whatever that takes, but I'm not willing to shut down. I think that the applicant has made every attempt to answer the questions and concerns that are out there. And if we're, if we're not going to put a moratorium on it, then we need to let them go with it. I would make a mo- motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, but we still have some questions and comments. So we're going to let those speak before we take a vote. So Commissioner Williams Bay?
Yes. I'd just like to start by saying I don't consider myself woke. But I do have some concerns about the name of the plat and the names of the streets. I understand that, and I appreciate Phil saying that the applicant will be willing to change those. I do, I do have still, I have some concerns about the water. But I feel more comfortable with the statements that have been made today. But as far as the names of the plats and the streets, I still have an issue with that. And I also like to say that, you know, I've been raised to be very respectful of all nationalities and, and races of people. I come from a very small town up in northeast Kansas. The name of our high school basketball team was the Red Men. And it was the Red Men for over 100 years. But because it was offensive to the Native American community, they changed the name. So again, I, I like to say, I appreciate Phil and the applicant indicating that they would be willing to change that.
Commissioner Bill Johnson?
I'm going to support this motion, and I kind of want to walk through this. Technically, and if I'm saying something wrong, staff, I want you to tell me so. But normally, we don't even take water into consideration. It's not a requirement of this situation. One of the commissioners brought it up. Once a commissioner brings it up, then that opens it up where we got involved in this water deal. We addressed them to get additional wells, which they did. This plat started out to be 52 lots. Now it's 26 with the option that they may have to buy some back and may end up with 13 lots there. We don't know. As far as the quality of the water, they will have to acquire a permit to build a house and make sure the water is okay to drink.
Any other comments? So I had an issue similar when I was on council related to street names. We had a street in West Wichita called Squaw Lane, and a lot of concern about that being inappropriate. We made the decision to change it to Delano. With the applicant willing to change the names to Saddle Ridge, Saddle Ridge Streets, Saddle Ridge Court, I'm asking Commissioner Warren and Commissioner Miles if they would allow a friendly amendment to accept that name change as part of their motion.
I would, I would allow that.
As well as the name of the subdivision? Okay, so that is the amended friendly amendment to that. Any other discussion or comments? Saying, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Blick?
I make a motion to deny based off the, when I seen the timelines of when the wells were dug, when the testing was done, the effect that it could be on the adjacent property owners that I've seen this before where at 53rd Street, when they built in a Walmart, we approved it. And everybody in that whole area that had additional residential neighborhoods burned up their sand points, and they had to go out and spend $2,000 to $5,000 to go and replace it. I think this is going to be the same situation. Speculation, of course, but from what I can see from the photos and what the residents, they're the experts. They've been there for 20, 30 years versus somebody coming out there for 24 hours and digging a well and seeing how much comes out of the ground. So my motion is to deny.
So we have a substitute motion to deny, and we have a second. Rules of procedure, we will take that substitute motion first. All in favor of denial, please say aye. Can I show you a ray of hand? Raise your hands, please. So Clontz, Blick, Nix, Williams Bay, oh, and Mater. Five. All in favor. All opposed to denial, please raise your hand. Say aye. Aye. So Duel, McKay, Aldrich- Aye. So Duel, McKay, Aldrich Frye, Bill Johnson, Chuck Warren, Tony Zellman, Cindy Miles, and Joe Johnson. So the denial does not get approved. We go back to the original motion to approve with the friendly amendment. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please raise your hands on the nays. Clontz, Joe Johnson, Josh Blick, Leon Mater, Q Nix. So that's seven, five?
Nine to five.
Nine, five. Gosh, math is hard. So, yeah. Motion is approved. Thank you. All right, next item. Is 4.3. Is that right? Okay. Item 4.3, which is the conditional use 2024-256. And Philip is doing the presentation.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Philip Zievenbergen with Planning Staff. Conditional use 24256 is a request in the county to permit a single vehicle RV campground on a property that is five acres in size and zoned rural residential. The property is located within a quarter mile east of South 143rd Street East and a quarter mile north of East 63rd Street South, and is addressed as 14600 East 60th Street South. As mentioned before, the applicant is requesting a single-use RV campground on a temporary basis in order to reside in an RV until their house is completed. The house has yet to be started construction, but conversation with the applicant has indicated that they intend to have a house completed within the next 18 months. And they would like to reside on the property during that time. An RV is not considered a permanent structure to be resided in by our zoning code. And the only way to accomplish this in the county is to classify it as an RV campground. And in this case, we, the recommendation for approval has conditions of approval that would limit it to one RV and would prohibit any tent camping, essentially not allowing campground. They would just be allowed to live in the one RV per the conditions of approval if it is approved. If you wanna go to the site plan, you can see that the RV is placed west of the shop building. And the applicant indicated that they intend to build a house somewhere in the middle of their Y driveway here. All properties to the northeast, south, and west of the subject's Saddle Zone Rural Residential and are developed with large lot, single-family dwellings. In 2022, the property was platted, so plating is not an issue in this case. The site does have access to East 60th Street South, which is a two-way residential gravel road. Water is provided by Sedgwick County Rural Water District 3, and sewer will be provided not only for the RV, but also for the future dwelling by an onsite system that is permitted and worked through with the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. The comprehensive plan identifies the area as rural, which allows for large lot rural subdivisions. And a RV campground would be permitted by conditional use approval in rural residential regardless of the size of the property. And again, staff is recommending approval with a condition that would limit it to the single RV on a temporary basis. To review the conditions of approval, again, it would be limited to one recreational vehicle. Tent camping is not permitted. The RV campground shall be developed and maintained in general compliance with the approved site plan. All improvements in operation of the RV campground shall be completed and with the applicable regulation and codes. The conditional use for the RV campground, again, was one RV. And it would be declared null and void upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for a single-family dwelling or the RV, or after two years, whichever comes first. And essentially, the RV would have to be removed within 30 days of either of those. There is a caveat to condition number four that a one-year extension could be requested by administrative adjustments. So that's not a public hearing process. That would, that essentially gives them the ability that if plans get extended for unforeseen circumstances, there could be the opportunity for one extension for up to one year. On-site water and wastewater services shall be in compliance with the Sedgwick County codes. Electric, gas, telephone, and cable television utilities may be provided by a separate utility service from the private residence. They have to obtain all applicable building permits, including building health zoning. And it will be include submitting site plans for review and approval by the M A B C D. And as always with conditional uses, if the property or use is found to be not in compliance with the conditional use and the conditions of approval, the conditional use can be revoked, and they would not be able to continue utilizing the property as they do now. I can walk through your site photos. You wanna go to the next? This is looking north at the site. You can see that the RV is placed. They have a metal building on property as well, which is, seems to be a storage area or a storage device at this time. Next picture. This is the property to the west. Again, it's looking north from the road at the property to the west. Next picture. This is the property to the east, looking north. They are constructing their dwelling at this time. Again, for reference, this is that metal storage container on the applicant's property. Next picture. And this is the property directly south, fairly grown in with vegetation, so you can just see the driveway into the property. I have heard some comments from surrounding property owners with concerns of it being turned into an actual RV campground. There was some confusion about that. There's been confusion about, or confusion, I'm sorry. There's been some comments about other activities going on in the site related to a sawmill. Those questions and concerns have been forwarded on to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, and has been advised that the use of a sawmill does fall underneath a legal rural home occupation. And I believe there are individuals here who want to express their concerns as well, so I will leave it at that, and I can stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Philip? I have just one real quick. Could you again stress the amount of time that the permit is allowed?
Sure. At the maximum, it would be a two-year period of time on the initial approval. Or if they get their certificate of occupancy for their house before then, then the conditional use is null and void at that time. So it's whichever comes sooner.
Great. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Miles.
So Philip, I have a question. So can they run a business on a property that doesn't have a house, a living structure, a home, whatever, on that property?
I will defer to J R on that question, our zoning administrator.
Well, that's an interesting question. I would need to look at the code to be sure, but are they currently living on the property, Philip?
My understanding is they are living in the RV.
So they are occupying it and living there, and the purpose of the home occupation is for the person where they live. Again, I'd need to look at the code and see what the actual text says on the county part to see, and I can do that.
And for clarification, the ability to possibly operate a home occupation is not germane to the request. The request is whether or not they can live in an RV on the site temporarily.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll call the agent or applicant forward. You have up to 10 minutes. And please give us your name and address for the record. Welcome.
My name is Jennifer Carter. Our current address is 327 North Zachary in Derby. We are not living in the RV at this time. It is not even on the ground at this point. We moved it to an RV community until we could get through with this hearing. So we have never actually lived in the RV out on the property. As for the concern of the sawmill, it is not our sawmill. It's a friend of ours, and he just bought ground and is getting ready to move it. It's not a home-based business. It's something he does for a hobby. And like I said, it's getting ready to be moved. He just purchased property, so that shouldn't be a concern because it will not be there.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Thank you. Standby. Are there any members of the public that would wish to speak on this item? Welcome. Please give us your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes.
Chairman. My name is John Scott Rue. I live at, well, I'm building at 14700 60th Street. I'm the most direct property to him, just to the east. My home address is 5702 Shadows, Wichita, Kansas, 67208. We have concerns about this because this says actually he could be there up to three years in an RV. We're getting ready to complete within probably the next eight or nine months our house there. I'm not the youngest guy anymore, so if anything would happen in that period of time, our property now be developed, will now be devalued because there is an RV sitting right next to it. This is a fairly nice house we're building. And having it designated as an RV park, even though it's single-use, it detracts the value of everybody's property pretty much around there. And we have several citizens here in our community, in our neighborhood, that are concerned with this. The other thing I'm concerned about is like the container building that he has out right now in his site plan is actually incorrect because if you go by the, the way this land was platted, he is actually not correct with his setbacks on the sides. So that building will have to be, probably be moved unless he tries to get a variance from you guys. There's some other issues. We don't know if he's gonna be running a generator. We don't know how he's getting his water. We don't know what he's gonna do with his waste. Does all that have to be in place according to M A D C B before he can actually move his camper in? But this could actually take up to three years, and we don't know when he's gonna start, when he's gonna finish. And then at any point in time they decide to sell that land, somebody else could come in and go, oh, you guys already designated it once as an RV park. You guys should be able to do it again. And then we could be sitting there six years with another RV out there. So I think that's my biggest concern is right now.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none. Appreciate you being here. Next speaker. Yes, please go to the podium. Give us your name and address. You have up to three minutes. Welcome.
My name is Joel Slifko, and I live at 15123 East 60th Street South. And I, the only concern I have is that sewer and water and everything be in place before the RV is placed on the land. Because I just have concerns that, you know, lines could break. Something could happen under that trailer in the middle of the winter, and then, you know, sewage is spilling all over. And we have lots of farmers that live in that area, and groundwater is a concern. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. Next speaker. All right, now we'll bring the applicant back for, you have two minutes for rebuttal for the items presented by the public.
So as for the sewer lines and water lines, we are already working with the contractor, and that will be in place before we move the RV back to that location. As for the setback, we realized that when we started planning with this, and it will, the container will be moved to appropriate setbacks for the shop. So was there anything else?
Ms. Carter, is your home under construction right now?
No, not yet. We're working on the blueprints and the building permits.
When do you plan to start? Roughly?
Hopefully within, well, we're gonna wait till after winter, so next spring, hopefully.
And what kind of timeline are you looking at for, to be occupied?
We're hoping within the next year. So we're hoping, because I don't wanna live that close to him for three years, so that's not an option, so.
Okay.
So.
Stay in the spirit of the season. Commissioner Miles.
Can you, can you show me where on this property you're in the process of building or planning to build?
We are gonna build right in here inside this Y, just right here. This, this point here would be the north end of a driveway that the house would pull into the garage at that point. So it's gonna be right in there. And then the lagoon and stuff will be over in this area here. And then we are also planning on putting another driveway in here, so there would be the correct access needed from fire trucks and whatever else we need to meet the driveway codes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for Ms. Carter? All right, thank you. No, I'm sorry. This is the rebuttal time for the applicant agent. Public has had their opportunity to speak. Thank you, ma'am. J R.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Miles, I've looked at the code. It'd be my opinion that if there were an issue with an RV being lived in, it would not qualify for home occupation.
All right. All right, so we're bringing it back to the commission for consideration. Commissioner Williams Bay.
Question for J R. You know, I was just reading through the comments here, and it says the applicant indicates a single-family dwelling will likely be completed in 18 months. An RV camp is permitted in our district with a conditional use. So they, they would have to come back and get a conditional use permit if they were to turn it into an RV park, right? So they couldn't, there could be no RV park unless they had, were permitted.
That would be correct. This is for the single use while they're constructing the dwelling unit.
Yeah, understand, but I just saw the comment about the RV camp.
Yeah, if they decide they wanted a real campground, then yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKay.
J R, this is not for, would you, how do the people, when they get their house done? Is it, they have to move the RV? Is it done when the occupancy certificate is permitted and they got a certain length of time? I mean, how, how do we know that when it's gonna be moved?
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Condition number four states that the RV would be removed within 30 days of occupancy. Correct.
I got another question.
Oh, yes. Commissioner Williams Bay.
Would the RV have to be moved off the property? I mean, it could still remain on the property, right?
It can't be lived in.
If I were asked, it'd be my opinion that yes, they just can't live in it. They could store it there like anyone else could.
Commissioner Warren.
I move to approve for staff comment and recommendations. Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Was that, wait, you voted. Okay, so the only nay we have is Commissioner Miles. Is that correct? All right, so motion passes 13 to one. Next item.
Chairman. We, these next two items, we were waiting to see if an applicant was gonna be here.
Right. Is the applicant agent for item 4.4, conditional use 2024-258, present? Great. All right. Thank you, Philip. Proceed.
Yes, again, Philip Zievenbergen for Planning Staff. Item 4.4 is conditional use 24258. It is a request to permit oil and gas drilling on property zoned rural residential. The property is located on the southeast corner of West 71st Street South and South 135th Street West. The entire parcel is 152.23 acres in size. But as you'll see in the site plan and review of the staff report, the applicant is intending to lease three acres in the northwest corner of the site for the oil and gas drilling purposes, and it would be one well and associated tanks for storage. And so again, the, the actual area for the drilling would be three acres. If it is approved, conditional, conditional uses are approved with site plan approval. Possible changes to the site plan would require additional action. So even if this is approved, it doesn't necessarily open it up to the entire 152-acre parcel. That would have to be considered at a future date for expansion. If you wanna go to the site plan, just so we can do a quick review of that, I've essentially already described the entire use at this point. You can see here they're looking for an access point off of 135th Street South, which lines up with a field access point across the street. It had a driveway to a pad where the oil drill would be established. And then this pad over here would be where the storage tanks are located. There are screening requirements in the zoning code that would have to be met. All properties in the area are zoned rural residential and either devoted to agricultural land or developed with large lot residential dwellings. Within a thousand-foot radius of the three-acre parcel, you have a dwelling unit directly Within a thousand foot radius of the three acre parcel, you have a dwelling unit directly north on West Seventy-first Street South. And then, if you go back to the aerial, please. There's an additional dwelling just southwest of the access drive on the west side of one hundred and thirty-fifth. Though, these two are the nearest dwellings to the actual three acre area. You do have some dwellings on large lots to the east. The comprehensive plan identifies the area for rural uses. This is per conditional use approval with the understanding that our lowest zoning classification is a residential zoning classification and uses such as this may be appropriate within the county, depending on site specific considerations, which is why we're here today. Staff recommends approval subject to the conditions of your staff report. It would permit oil and gas drilling that is developed and operated in substantial compliance with the approved site plan. And any associated documents, license, permits, and detailed drilling and completion activities used to obtain the conditional use approval. Prior to commencing oil and gas drilling activities, the applicant shall obtain all applicable permits, licenses, and/or inspections from Sedgwick County, the state of Kansas, or other federal government, including but not limited to M A B C D, Environmental Resources, Sedgwick County Fire Department, the Sedgwick County Public Works, Kansas Department of Health and Environment, Kansas Corporation Commission. Prior to moving equipment into Sedgwick County, the applicant shall obtain all applicable permits required to move and transport oversized equipment onto Sedgwick County Public Rights of Way. Prior to commencing drilling activities, the applicant shall be, shall post an approved surety bond in an amount agreed to by Sedgwick County that can called upon by Sedgwick County or the township in the event that the county or the township is required to repair or replace any roads, bridges, traffic control devices, drainage structures, and other public infrastructure. Again, that would be coordinated by Sedgwick County Public Works. Any equipment or pertinences that will remain on the site tracked for more than thirty days, once the well is completed or abandoned, shall be set back from the center line of West Seventy-first Street South and one hundred and thirty-fifth Street West at least eighty-five feet per the unified zoning code. Prior to commencing oil and gas drilling activities, the applicant shall meet the Sedgwick County Fire Department officials to establish a system for building and equipment identification. Prior to commencing this activity, the applicant shall provide a stormwater drainage plan two and receive approval from Sedgwick County Environmental Resources. The stormwater drainage plan will describe how stormwater runoff from the application area will be managed. And as always with conditional uses, if they do not comply with any of the conditions, the conditional use can be revoked. I have heard a couple of comments from surrounding property owners. One concern is there's, it shows up as a creek on here. I don't think it has water in it all the time, but essentially it's kind of a, a low spot where when it does rain, that's where the water drains. You can see that here. It would be east of the area in which the drilling would commence. There was concern that, you know, if enough water goes up, it could possibly swell and interact with the site, and so there's just concern of, you know, if, if there was a leak with this, or if this swells up and the water interacts with the site, like how is that going to be managed? Or how's that going to impact the water quality as it goes downstream? And then, of course, we have, uh, there was concerns of folks of whether or not this could be converted into an injection well. Our zoning code by definition of oil and gas drilling that would be permitted under a zoning classification, however, that is regulated by the state of Kansas. And so that's not something that we have the authority over. Technically, the zoning would allow it, but that's determined by the state of Kansas on whether or not they would approve the well to be extraction only, or if it could be an injection well at some point in time in the future. Those were the two specifics that I remember. Again, I'll stand and let the folks who have comments here provide their comments to you. But I can stand for any questions.
Any questions for Philip from commission, Commissioner Bay, Williams Bay?
Philip, what area of the site is the drilling going to take place?
Yes, it'd be a three acre area in the northwest corner of the site, so approximately this area here.
And nowhere, nowhere else on site?
The site plan that they provided only indicated this area of the property.
That it?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Philip. Now I'll bring the applicant and agent forward. Give us your name and address. For the record, you have up to ten minutes. And just out of curiosity, how well do you identify with Tommy Norris's character from Landman? That's very strange.
You know, that, that, you know, makes my, makes me feel kind of sad when the land man does everything and loses a finger.
All right. Welcome.
Well, yes, thank you, Commissioner Fry. My name is Jay Schweickert. I'm a operations engineer employed with Grand Mesa. I'll go over here, just kind of give you a brief outline of who we are, what we do. You know why we're here. We want to drill an oil and gas well on a property and, and we have a lease. And just give you a brief outline, just to clarify some of the, I saw, caught some of his questions. And just to go through the process of what, what's, what we do in oil and gas. Grand Mesa is a private company that's started in nineteen eighty-one. It's a family owned business. I have been in the oil and gas business since nineteen eighty-eight as an operations engineer, four years with a major, so the majority is with independents, so that means I do all aspects from, from the drilling of the well to the plugging, to everything in between. The process is, you know, it's a drill, it's a two step. It's, we, first, we get a prospect area by geologist. We get a lease. The lease is, is one hundred and sixty acres on, on West Struthers here. It's a one hundred and sixty acre lease is what we obtained from him. So the, the pad, and when we get there, I believe I have some other slides and stuff to show that also answer questions. I did forward, if he can look for them while I'm just kind of stall, kind of going through the process here, but as, we're, we're, first thing we do in the, uh, there it is. So do I advance?
They just call for it and they'll advance.
Okay, go ahead and advance. First thing we do, after we get a prospect area and lease, we'll get a plat. We want to know where the well is at. We look at the logistics. I look at why, how to, how to get in. Problems in, in things to, uh, to stop me from, and, and increase my costs. Also, and the big step here is why we're here is the permitting process. This is one of the steps. Sedgwick County is a little extra than most other counties out west. The drilling rig, if you would, what, also to show you where this is at, one more step, one more slide. So one logistic is, yes, it's on paved roads. It's about four, three miles north of Clearwater and just west of Hayesville. So power lines run east, north, and south there all the time, or just supplying the cities. The next, when, when the drilling rig, we apply and get for, we apply for the commission for a permit, K C C. We, we, we do two steps. We, we set, in this area, we're going to set conductor pipe at a hundred feet. We typically set sixty to seventy, I went a hundred because it's a little more, a little more sandy in this area, and we also set surface. To, those two are to protect the integrity of the surface pipe and to help with, keep, protect fresh water. Surface pipe is to protect fresh water. So the drilling rig will be there. We plan to be there. We hope to be there within the first quarter next year. It's going to be there seven days. Yes, if you had advanced to the next slide. What, as he showed you, West Struthers, we have, are using the farmer's entrance, going down the, uh, staying off the, staying off our right, staying off the right of way of the, uh, the county roads, you know, within the fence line. The two, the two hundred, three hundred foot, that is, we flatten an area. And then we dig earthen pits to handle the fluids while we're drilling. So that's, that's phase one. After we determine if we have a commercial well, then we'll set pipe and the completions operations come in. Next slide, please. While I looked at this area, if you look at it, you want to know where to put the tank battery. And what, what appeared in the north there, yes, the draw to the north. That area, that's zone A, that, that, that is the hundred year flood zone. We want to stay out of that because it's extra permitting. I don't want, I don't want to be flooded. I stay out of that. The next, when we set pipe, we come in and do, we, we work over the well, we equip the well. The tank battery, that sixty foot by a hundred foot, which is less than, which is one fifth of an acre. Also, the well site pad will also be the similar size, less than, less than an acre, less than about one fifth of an acre, so. Two together, don't take up much space. After that, I mean, we, we got this, we got the commissions, we got the M A P C's, the staff's report. And didn't have any problems with the conditions. I mean, yeah, having a fence in an area, that's a little different for this oil and gas area as, if you advance to the next slide or so. The, uh, that, we saw that there were two houses, you know, I, I'll, I'll talk to the landowner on where to put the tank battery, and I did talk to Wes. But keeping it by the well and off, you know, offset, you know, so we don't have to act, we can't access from the north because that's too much to, uh, to get across that draw. The final thing is I'll show you that in this area, oil and gas, next, beside please. Is, next slide. There's this, the, right here, the yellow is the acreage, the, the second, the section we're in. We operate a well here. We operate a disposal well here. We just do one development at a time, so it's just, yeah, part of the permit process. Every time we drill a well, if this proves up a location, we'll, we'll do another process of the, uh, through the, uh, through the zoning. Because this, as you see, there's a trend of wells, trend of wells. These are from the fifties, forty, sixties era. Most of them are plugged. That's what those symbols are. Any questions?
Appreciate it. We do have a couple. Commissioner Aldrich.
Those other wells that you, you've done, are they still in operation or they've been canceled?
Yes, they're in operation. Yeah, five barrels a day, and then it handles the disposal well. So it's actually Struthers, their fam, their, their family, their cousins. West, West Struthers and.
Just out of curiosity, approximately, how much do they, they pump a, a day?
We're getting five barrels a day out of the well to the west. And to the, the disposal well was, we purchased these wells. The disposal well is a shallow disposal well. It's permitted up to five hundred. And it handles about eighty, ninety barrels right now, so it's got capacity. The question on the, is from staff about the disposal, yes, the K C C does, does have authority over that. But during that process, we have to also mail out an area of interest of impact to offset landowners.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the commission? Uh, yes, Commissioner Mater.
So the tank battery that's on it, uh, what'll you have there for tank battery?
We do, in Kansas, for these wells that are, this forty-one hundred foot well, we've got three zones to hopefully look at, just oil, very little gas, enough gas to run the engine if we need to. But after eventually we turn the propane, or I'll turn on electricity from the beginning if it's, if there's not enough gas. The, uh.
The wastewater will not be onsite, it'll be piped immediately to this.
We, we'll, we'll hopefully get a right of way and we can pump it to that disposal well to keep trucking down. I mean, trucking is our enemy. There's just a gun barrel and two water, two oil tanks hopefully, and one water tank. We do two oil tanks as it holds, so. You know, also, we can put, we could put berms around the well and keep it out of water there too. We've done that in areas. So just any kind of stands, I mean, we need to do. We talked to neighbors, people I, I encourage, I always encourage, you get a lot of questions new from when you get, when you get a well, from not only a landowner, but from, from neighbors.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant agent? Seeing none, thank you. Standby, sir. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Please step forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and you have up to three minutes. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. I'm Mike Woods. I grew up right across the street, still over the land from where they're going to drill the well. You heard him say there's a hundred year flood plan in there. I've come home from Halloween about twenty years ago. We'd gotten eleven inches of rain in four hours. And it flooded. I mean, I'm worried about the runoff, and if they don't have the containment right, will it handle eleven inches of rain in four hours? Well, maybe not a lot of places would, but I don't want the contamination on my property if it does. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none. Sir, did you say you lived across the street to the west, east, north, or?
Three acres. I had the forty acres right across the street. I sold the house burnt, so I sold it and they fixed it up.
Okay.
Still over thirty-one acres around.
All right, thank you.
Farmer. And you do see all the cricks on these, that water, it gotta go somewhere.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Next speaker. Name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes and welcome.
Thank you. My name's Brad Bowman. I live at one, three, two, one, two, West Seventy-ninth Street South. I live in the property the quarter south of this, uh, said quarter of Wes's. I'm a fourth generation to live here. So got a pretty good idea of how the lay of the land is and what happens with water runoff. And so we have two areas of concern with this particular location. One being the visual impact of these tanks. Being, blocking the view of that intersection. Hundred and thirty-fifth Street, uh, Seventy-first Street South, one hundred and thirty-fifth Street West has had numerous accidents at that intersection. I have lost count of the amount of, of accidents that's happened at that intersection. So by adding more stuff to that corner, you're just going to affect the visual impact of that intersection. So then the second thing is, is the environmental, like Mike was talking about, the environmental impact of that, if something would happen, you know, then where's the water going to run? Well, where this property is, this little three acres, it's, let me tell you how the, how many, how a drainage plan works out there. It's going to go one way. And it's right down to that drainage ditch and right to that little draw, right down through the property, through the pond, right on over to just keep on following the trail to the east. That's where it's going to go. It's done since the beginning of time, and there's nothing you can do to stop that flow of water. Just the way it is. So that's the two main concerns, visual impact of that intersection for the safety and the environmental issue, of course, as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Please give us your name and address. You have up to three minutes and welcome.
I'm Phil Wise. I'm not related to that lady that got voted in the other day. I, Phil Wise, I live at sixty-seven oh one, South, one hundred and nineteenth Street West. And I'm going to buy this ground across the road to the north. And it, he's, he didn't mention that it's already, that's been leased too. He could go out there with a well, but anyway, disposal wells, is he going to drill another one there? Or go up to the north? And there's a disposal well a mile and a half west. And the, the tank battery would be eyesore. And coming off, semis coming off of one hundred and thirty-fifth Street would be a problem later on. But you're going to have to have driveways and berms and stuff. It's just an obtuse kind of place to put a rig. And there's been rigs put in any direction within a mile, in, in any direction that didn't hit any oil. I think that's why they call it exploration.
Thank you, Mr. Wise. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Next speaker. Going once. Going twice. All right, now we ask the applicant agent to come back up. And you have two minutes to address the concerns that the public spoke on.
Yeah, on the drainage, like that part of the process is working with the, uh, Sedgwick County, was it the drainage, I believe, the, uh, the runoff? The tank battery is gonna, is part of the key to contain on our tank batteries is that we, we build up a two and a half or three foot wall. That'll keep anything, hopefully anything out, and anything that's what we produce that spills in, in that containment. They, uh, like I said, it, it's a minimal impact on, on the land overall in the end, so. Yeah, it, I realize it's going to go east and into the draw, so. Keeping maybe a berm up around the well is probably common sense here. Keep it out of the draw. Because to keep less, less contained, more, more containment, the better it off it is for me too, to everybody.
Any questions from the commission for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you, sir. All right, now we're bringing it back to the commission for discussion, consideration. Commissioner McKay.
I have a question for the staff. When the gentleman talked about his lease, he said they've leased the whole one hundred and sixty acres of ground. When the gentleman talked about his lease, he said they've leased the whole hundred and sixty acres of ground, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Hold on sir, sir, can you let staff answer the question?
Yes, he did indicate he leased all hundred and sixty acres.
My question is this, if they hit a well on this, they wanna go. A little ways way, east, west of it, or south, do they have to come through this process again?
Their current site plan indicates one well. Correct me if I'm wrong JR, but essentially a site plan revision can be done by administrative approval, however. My understanding is that the review of that may look into the extent at which they are looking to increase. And it could require them to do an amendment of the conditional use.
So could we include that as a motion that it be required to come back if there were any?
Yes, you can, you can add a condition that any change essentially requires an amendment.
Okay, thank you, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna abstain from this item.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Warren.
Move to approve for staff comment recommendation, and with the addition that requires them to come back for approval from this body, should there be any major changes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, any questions or comments?
Who is the second?
Uh, Commissioner Aldrich, right?
Oh, yeah.
I should've clarified, I apologize, all right, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay, and we have, on the record, Clance One abstain. Thank you. Next item, is item twenty-two-four dash thirty, is the applicant agent present?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great, all right, Christina.
Good afternoon everyone, Christina Ripe of Planning Staff, um, this is K C U P twenty-two-four triple zero thirty. The applicant requests to amend the provisions of CUP Development Plan number forty-five, known as the C K M Community Unit Plan. To allow for entertainment establishment on parcel three B. The parcel is almost one and a half acres in size, and it is generally located north of East Central and west of North Woodlawn. The subject site is currently developed with a nearly twenty-five thousand square foot fitness complex, which is defined in the zoning code as personal improvement service. And the applicant intends to utilize the existing building for the proposed use. Um, according to section, uh, three dash three zero dash zero five zero of the city code. No entertainment is allowed on the premise between the hours of two AM and noon. Any noise generated by indoor or outdoor entertainment is subject to noise compatibility standards, um, of the Unified Zoning Code. And the City of Wichita's, uh, noise ordinance. The parking requirements in the CUP document, um, they indicate that they are the same as the Unified Zoning Code. While it does not specifically mention parking requirements for entertainment establishment, um, we just go to the next closest, which is nightclub in the city, which allows for more than three hundred. Patrons, um, to attend an event that has live music and alcohol. Um, there is an existing parking lot on parcel three B that will restrict the occupancy of the events. A little bit of case history here, um, so most recently, earlier this year, uh, they filed a CUP adjustment. Through, uh, the planning department, which is an administrative process to create parcel three B, um, for this entertainment establishment. Uh, the requested CUP amendment is in conformance with the Community Investments Plan. Uh, the Wichita Future Growth Concept Map identifies the area to be appropriate for new employment. Um, the plan's locational guidelines, uh, they indicate that major commercial and employment centers should be located at intersections of arterial streets and along highways. And commercial corridors, the subject site is located at Central and Woodlawn, which are both arterial streets. And the, uh, requested CUP amendment is in conformance with the Wichita Places for People Plan. The Places for People Plan outlines a number of strategies, uh, strategy three is to improve the economic feasibility of commercial and service uses. And the markets necessary to support them. The proposed use for the site will utilize existing buildings, um, it's located in an area with, uh, multimodal infrastructure. And is situated near properties that similarly provide events and alcohol, um, this is in the same community unit plan. As, uh, Wichita Brewing Company, and they have, um, their own separate event center that allows, um, events and alcohol. Strategy six of the plan aims to encourage infill and redevelopment that is contextual to the environment in which it is occurring. And, um, it allows the applicant to add entertainment establishment, uh, as a permitted use in an area that is appropriate for said use. Staff is recommending approval of CUP amendment, subject to the conditions that are listed in your staff report. This recommendation is based on the golden rules. Um, at the time the staff report was prepared, staff received one, um, comment from an adjacent property owner who was an objection to the CUP amendment. Due to the lack of parking, I did provide that comment in your staff report. Um, and I believe he is here today to speak upon that a little bit more. This went to the District Advisory Board, District One on Monday, and they provided their own, um, list of conditions, I provided that in a, on a sheet of paper and distributed. That to you guys, um, they added two additional conditions. The first one is that any events pertaining to the entertainment establishment in, in the city must communicate their parking agreements. And the other condition is that the applicant shall install a fence on the east property line if allowed. And if we wanna take a look at the aerial map here real quick, please. Thank you, uh, we can see where the east property line is, um, and so, um, while it is not the planning department's discretion. We can see that the east property line is in the middle of a road. Um, so let's go to some of the site photos here.
So just real quick, since you're on that, the east property line, is that the green line that runs north-south?
Yes, on the right side.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so this is looking east towards the site, next slide please.
That's nothing.
This is looking south towards the site, next slide please. This is looking west towards the site, next slide please. This is looking north towards the site, next slide please. This is looking north away from the site, next slide please. Looking east away from the site, next slide please. South away from the site, and I've got one more slide for you, next slide please. Looking west away from the site towards the creek, with that I will stand for any questions.
So can you go back to the slide of showing that east wall? Where the park, cars were parked against it? It was like the third slide from the end.
Could we go to looking west towards site please, did you say looking west?
Yeah. Keep going.
Looking west towards site?
Now keep, yeah, that right there, so, and I, reading the DAB's. Amendment, she'll install a fence on the east side of the property, would that be against the building or on the, where the cars are?
That would be where the property line is located for parcel three B, so the legal description, um, is provided, um, in our, as part of our application. And, um, they indicated that parcel B would be, um, in the middle of this road that you see here.
Okay. I just failed to see the purpose of it, go ahead, anyone else have questions? For the, for the staff on this? Okay, we'll take it out to the applicant agent. For your presentation, you have up to ten minutes, uh, give us your name and address for the record and welcome.
Thank you for welcoming here, my name is Greg Collier, I live at twenty-one oh six South Wheatland Street, Wichita, Kansas. I am an employee of Genesis Health Clubs, and I've been having fun getting involved with permitting processes recently. And ran into this, uh, for this club. Our intent is to add it, add as an entertainment center, we plan on hosting member events, uh. You know, member appreciation events, um, try, and also trying to increase the traffic, traffic, we wouldn't have a DJ in there. On, uh, some days to play music and entertain the people that are there as well as. You know, serve some alcohol, you know, serve some alcohol and, uh, located there in the club. That's, that's it, pretty simple, it's a model that is used, we have. You know, approximately eighty clubs across the country, probably twenty of them have liquor establishments in them. It's worked out well, and, uh, something we're adding to, this is probably the original Genesis location if I remember right. And we're wanting to add that there. We are aware of, of the parking, and you saw that picture, you know, the cars along the east wall and the property line, so when you, when you come in off of central. You drive past, uh, the, one of the, the first building in the picture, and as you get back there. There's a pretty wide gap, probably, I don't know, my guess, maybe thirty yards. And we have one building to the east of us and we have our building. And you saw the cars parked there, right up next to the building, we also do have cars parked. Right there in the middle where there's gaps on both sides that traffic goes through. It's, it does get a little full sometimes, um, I've been trying to pay attention, I guess, since the complaint come to us. About the parking, and I know when I come in there every day. That there, it's, I think it's called the cat hospital, it's a veterinary center, when I come in there in the mornings. There's no cars really parked in front. Whether, whether their customers are not, maybe occasionally want, when I leave at night. Originally I said, I don't ever really remember seeing cars, I do see some of our customers might park. Over there on the, the part furthest away from the building. So I'm not gonna say we don't have some people park over there sometimes when the club gets full. I guess, and my argument to address is, uh, expanding this to an entertainment center. The entertainment events or the, you know, the, the members appreciation events would be happening after the businesses in that area are closed. And we still would be limited to the number of occupants to the parking that we have. And I just, I have hard times seeing how putting a fence up. Would make that big of a difference, it's a commercial shopping center area designated as that. It'd be like putting a fence up to divide the properties, it's still a drive-through area, people could still park there and walk just immediately to our door. So the fence to me, kind of a funny deal to show up in the middle of a shopping center, excuse me. I guess that's all I really have to say on that, um, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for the speaker, Commissioner Williams, may.
Yes sir, how many complaints have you had about, uh, parking?
My understanding is, um, the owner of the building to the east of us has talked, and I know that. Our, that Genesis has talked to them, I know they sent letters out to our members asking them not to park there, but. It's, a lot of that's probably like anything else, you know, I went, my wife and I went to a restaurant the other day, the parking lot was full, we parked in the lot next door and walked over. It's gonna happen, but we do try to discourage that.
But how many have you had, have you, just one, several, or complaints?
I don't know the actual number of times we've discussed it with them, um, I know there's a history of complaints about our parking.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Commissioner Blick?
The lot to the north that you see right there, is that your parking lot also?
That is our parking lot.
That's all I needed, thank you.
Commissioner Aldrich.
Well, encroaching on somebody else's parking, you know, that's, you know, they got a business there too and stuff, so. I guess if they was to put signage up, uh, that vehicles would be told at expense, and if that happened, do you think that would, uh. You know, deter any of, of your, uh, your customers from parking over there?
I, I can't speak to the intent of our customers, again, that would definitely be something we would encourage. That they honor those signs and not park up against the building, but it is a commercial center and. Those parking spaces on the outlier areas, it doesn't make sense that they sit empty all the time.
Well, granted, but if it's not your property, you don't have the right to park on somebody else's property.
I understand that, I, I-
Anyone else? All right, thank you sir, stand by, there may be more opportunity.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? Yes, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, you have up to three minutes and welcome.
Give me three minutes to get to the podium.
Chair of Commissioners, Bob Kaplan, sixty-one thirty, East Central, Suite one one seven.
Hold on one second sir, I'm gonna fix the microphone for you. Okay, restart the clock please for Mr. Kaplan.
Go ahead and do your comments and then I'll try, I'll repeat close.
How am I gonna hear? I am partner on the adjacent shopping center, it's approximately thirty acres. The applicant has insufficient parking, they do not have enough parking for their occupancy and for their members. So what they do is they use my parking lot to accommodate their members. We've talked to them several times, they said they would control it, they do not control it, they cannot control it. You know, and I know, that people are gonna park as close to their destination as they can. They don't care whose land they're parking on. I myself to reserve, I have my law office in the same building next door adjacent. I put up a handicap stall, it's the only way I could guarantee myself that I had parking. There is a very, very simple solution to this whole problem. We do not oppose the entertainment center, that's fine, I don't care. What I want them to do is fence the east line of their property. They have access on the west to Brookside Street, they have another access that they can use that won't affect us. If you look at the handout, look at the, take a moment, look at the handout, please. The first is a letter from, uh, Dr. Jones, she's a veterinarian doctor. She's very, very unhappy that her parking stalls and her customers' parking stalls are being utilized. By the Genesis membership. She wants that to stop and that's her opposition. And what we can do, go to the, go to the next photo. You see on the west where it says North Brookside Street. The applicant came to us many years ago and said we wanna put in Brookside Street. It was dedicated already, it had just never been paved or installed, and we accommodated them and signed the petition. So they could have that Brookside access, and it's still there, it's available to them. They can access from the west and they can exit to the west and stay off our property. That is, that is shown on the next slide, you'll see Brookside where it goes in. As far as the, as far as the off-street parking is concerned. You can go to the very last, uh, views from the north, the south, the south, the southwest. Look at all, look at all the cars, not a one of those cars, not a one of those cars. Belongs to or uses a customer at Plaza del Sol, which is my shopping center, those are- Those are all people parking there and walking next door to the Genesis. All the, I'm trying very, very hard to cooperate.
Understand, sir. Your time has.
They can cooperate by using the west exit. The, all I wanna do when the DAB.
I, I think your time is up, sir. Would you?
May I have, may I have another two minutes, please?
I can allow you up to one more minute. One minute.
When the DAB approved a amendment to the CUP, it was subject to their putting in a fence. And if you look at the, at the aerial, if you look at the aerial where, uh, you'll see a white line. You see the white line on aerial to the, on the east property line of Genesis marked fence. That's all they gotta do is put in that fence and the problem solved. It's easy. It's simple. It's inexpensive. I don't know why the fuss. And then they exit the driveway to Brookside, which goes down the Central. And that's, that's the same access, the other access. It just, it's just unrealistic for the, for the gentleman to stand here and say, it's no problem. We can park on our, he acknowledges that he's parking on my property.
All right, sir.
But he, he says it's not a property.
Thank you.
Hey, your time's up.
Thank you.
Just add, just add one condition. I hear you, sir. Just add one condition that they fence the east property line and we're done.
We got you. Thank you.
That's all I need is that additional condition.
Let's see if there's questions for you.
Give it to her.
All right. Give him his, so he can hear. No, no questions?
No questions.
Next speaker. Any other speakers? Okay, saying none, we'll bring the applicant agent back for rebuttal. You'll have up to two minutes.
First of all, I'm not very experienced at this and I, I apologize for overstepping by giving the appearance that it's okay that we parked there. I don't think that was my intent. My intent is to say, we try to encourage not to happen. We would do everything we can. We did indicate at the, uh, District Advisory Board that we would consider putting that, that fence up in there. It, to me, it's just gonna look funny, but that's, it's, it's definitely not off the table. It just, to me, it would seem like it would disrupt the whole appearance of that area for a commercial aspect. Mr. Kaplan, I apologize for making it appear that I think it's okay that we park in your area. That's not what I meant. And it, our corporate offices are there too.
Sir, we keep the discussion between the commission and the speaker.
Our corporate offices are there too, and I would be willing, if anybody parks out there, if he called me, to walk over there and find out if it's one of our customers. And then talk to the ones that are doing that violation. Because I understand his point there.
Okay.
And I shouldn't take it for granted if there's empty parking places that we should be in. I, I don't mean to say entitled to use them. But I apologize for that.
Thank you. Uh, we have a question from Commissioner Zimbalman.
So looking at this overhead drawing, I, I don't see why you need the whole fence. Can't you just block off that access drive and keep the cars out from coming over?
Is, is this the drawing you're looking at?
Yeah, sir, you need to stay at the podium and use the mouse because we broadcast this on social media.
Okay.
So use the mouse to, yes, thank you.
And I'm not sure of the legal structure of this, but yeah, I mean, this is a drive-through. These are Genesis customers' cars parked through here. That's, I'm positive of that. I don't see any over here, but I know that people drive through here to obviously get to the back here. And people drive through here to get into our parking lot back here. Are you asking us to close that access off so this isn't there?
Well, that would keep the cars out, but then you'll have to do something to keep the people from crawling over your access.
Yeah.
But I think that's why he wants a fence is so they can't park there and walk through that opening and get into the club.
And, and I know that was the condition of the approval is that we put, put a fence in there. And the initial indications are that if that's what we have to do, we would do it.
Commissioner Blick?
I think the bigger problem is, is, is there a driveway that's on that west side? I don't see one on that aerial right there.
On the west side?
Yeah, right there.
This is Brookside Avenue?
Correct.
You come up through here and this goes into our parking lot back here.
And that's the front lot.
So on the south lot is?
Oh, no, there is no driveway. The only way into this front lot is through this access.
So if you put a fence right there, you're gonna block all access to that south driveway?
And that was kinda what I was saying when I implied putting a fence in there really wouldn't work, because we, we would have to block that access.
So do you have a problem putting a driveway onto, uh, Brookside Street, North Brookside, Kerbin Gutter and all that stuff over there?
I would definitely have to address that, um, with the owner. I'd, that would be pretty costly. But I, he would prob, I mean, he's gonna consider anything and if it doesn't make sense, then we just, we probably wouldn't continue the plan.
Any other commissioner, Commissioner Aldrich?
Well, it sounds like at one point, based on conversations, that it was agreed at one time that he would utilize the access over on the west side of the property. Question for, for staff, I guess. If, uh, on the fence requirement, what type of fence would that be? Would that have to be a solid fence? Could that be a chain link fence? Any particular? Is there a height restriction?
The District Advisory Board actually did not specify the type of fence, uh, that would be installed on this property. There are screening requirements, but we can't say that this is necessarily, uh, under the zoning code of first screening requirements.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a screening fence, so it could, doesn't have to be a wood fence. It could be chain link. There's no, like, it's not a screening fence. It's basically a security fence, so it would not have to follow screening standards of the code for materials or height.
Okay. To be a split rail corral. That would be a fence. All right, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion, consideration and action. Commissioner Johnson, Joe Johnson. He's asking for a delay to, uh, allow for the applicant to discuss with the owner.
Mr. Johnson, can you please speak into the microphone to?
Push the button down. I, I made a motion to defer it until he has a chance to talk to the owner and what they're willing to do as far as access to that, uh, north, north lot. And how, south lot, I'm sorry, and how willing they are to put the fence up and.
So our next meeting, since we only have the one meeting in December, would be January ninth.
Defer it to January ninth. Does that give you enough time?
Could we ask the applicant if he was agreeable to that approach?
Well, it's gonna be the action, whether or not he's agreed to it or not. He's gonna have to live by it if that's what we approve. Sorry.
Does that give you enough time?
It, it would give me enough time to talk to the owner. Again, at the District Advisory Board, it was kind of agreed that if we put the fence up and it came, you know, with, I think, almost unanimous vote, and we would still be willing to put the fence up. But adding another condition and delaying this, I started this process back in July. And to keep adding time and put another delay on it, I can't, I can't promise what his reaction would be, but it would give me time to bring it up and talk to him.
I'd second that. The reason why is that fence?
All right, we already have a second.
Discussion, the reason why, because if you put a fence, there's no way you can put traffic that comes from the north down into that south lot. If you put a fence, there, there's no room for two-way traffic on that most, on that east side. So you're gonna have to have an entrance on that south somewhere.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Joe Johnson, a second by Commissioner McKay to delay and.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we go ahead and approve and require the fence be put on the east side.
Do we have a second? No second, the motion dies?
I, I got, I got a question. Again, going back to what Commissioner Blick had said, if there was a fence put on her the way it is right now, would that completely alleviate the, any access to his parking? Parking lot that he's got now, he'll have to have access from over on, uh, whatever that street is on the, on the west side. So just putting a fence up doesn't solve the problem. There's still access ingress and egress to the other, to the other lot, isn't there?
But that's their problem, because if they're, if they're bas, basically, in my opinion, like landlocked with part of their parking lot, then they need to figure out how to fix part of that issue, because it sounds like having cars consistently go through and or park in this other parking lot is, is an issue and has been an ongoing, ongoing issue. And the, the gentleman, the agent says that this has been going on since July and it sounds like something that he'd like to wrap up and not continue and continue, so.
All right, I have a hand raised by Commissioner Warren.
I'm just not sure that a fence is gonna solve the problem.
Yeah. So we have a motion. Did we get a second?
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with the condition of adding a fence. Discussion?
I would really like to put a definition on fence. If it's a two-foot-high fence, we've accomplished nothing. If it's a five-foot-high chain link, we've accomplished something. People will still walk around it. We can't stop it, but this has certainly alleviated, bring it, bring it reduced quite a bit.
Well, that, who made the motion, see what the friendly amendment would be?
Yeah, I'm happy to say a five-foot fence.
Okay, a motion and a second. A call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say aye. Aye. Motion denied. So we'll go back to the original motion, which was to delay till January ninth to allow the applicant to work through some, some of these ideas presented and some of the concerns and bring it back for reconsideration. And that motion was Commissioner Joe Johnson with the second by Commissioner John McKay. Am I that correct? All right.
Yeah, just, just, sir?
Yes, sir.
I would like to, to just simply, we've talked about the street on the west. They can put a fence up, but there's gotta be, like Cindy was saying, there's gotta be some way to get into that parking lot. So one of the things might be considered is if the applicant would talk to the staff about some advice on how to put the fence up and how to get access to the parking lot.
All right. All right, so call for a vote. All in favor, oh, yes, Commissioner Dool.
Uh, one more comment. I think by this motion, it may take additional time. I'm talking to the applicant and I know you've been on it a long time, but if we deny it, you can't bring it back in for another year.
Right. So our motion would be at the earliest January ninth, but let's not hold it to that. Is that be all right? So that if, if they need additional time to work through it, it can be, so, okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Got some work to do. Again. That's all right. All right, um, you're getting, all right, so item four-point-eight, is that correct? PUD four-point-eight, PUD twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-four. This is the entertainment establishment on North Twenty-first and North Market. Am I on the right one?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, PUD twenty-four twenty-four. The applicant for this case is requesting a zone change from general commercial to planned unit development to create the M-Power Planned Unit Development on number one-hundred-and-thirty-five. It's located on the southwest corner of North Market and East Twenty-first Street. And it's developed with two vacant buildings constructed in nineteen fifty-one and nineteen twenty-nine. The buildings are currently under renovation for the proposed development. Uh, the building that was built in nineteen fifty-one is a former furniture store. And, uh, the other one was built in nineteen twenty-nine as the former Nomar Theater, which was historically a social hub for Mexican immigrants known for showing Spanish-language movies. Uh, the applicant proposes to turn the theater into a retail vendor and event space. And the alley between the two buildings was vacated last year, um, which the applicant proposes to turn into an outdoor dining and gathering space. Uh, the events and uses on site that they are proposing fall under the category of entertainment establishment in the city and nightclub in the city. Uh, because entertainment establishment allows, um, for up to three hundred people to attend events with live music and alcohol simultaneously. And nightclub is for more than three hundred. Um, requests for any of these uses, but normally, when, uh, they're within three hundred feet of a place of worship, public park, school or residential zoning, um, they would require a conditional use under Section three D six W of the Unified Zoning Code. However, uh, this zone change acts in lieu of a conditional use application because we have the same, um, notification and public hearing processes. Uh, normally, uh, Section four of the Unified Zoning Code requires one parking space per two occupants for each use. Um, they are requesting to use the existing parking lot on the south half of the subject site, um, regardless of the number of occupants, um, for either of the events. Um, staff is in agreement with the request in light of the diversity of available transportation options in the area. Wichita Transit stops on the southeast corner of East Twentieth Street and North Broadway, um, as well as, um, the one block north on the west side of North Market Street. Um, staff is recommending that a parking plan and transportation plan be provided as part of any community event permit application, which goes through the Building and Construction Department. Um, because community events would be taking place in the parking lot, um, which would not, not longer be available, uh, to onsite parking for a community event. The applicant is requesting that any of these events, whether they are entertainment establishment, nightclub or event center, um, that the hours be between ten AM and eleven PM Sunday through Thursday and ten AM to midnight on Friday and Saturday. However, due to the proximity of residential zoning and the anticipated noise and traffic associated with these events, staff is recommending modified hours of operation, uh, to mitigate some of these adverse impacts. Um, I did provide in this paragraph here, but in the PUD document, uh, staff has recommended some changes and those are listed later in your staff report. Um, they are also requesting an exemption from the Wichita Landscape Code and not require landscaping on site. Uh, the buildings that are currently on site, um, they have zero setbacks. And so, um, you know, the, even though the value of the renovation is likely over fifty percent, that would remove it. It would no longer be grandfathered in normally. And so staff agrees with the applicant's request, um, because the existing buildings, which they intend to utilize, um, were constructed to the property lines before, before the zoning code standards. Uh, the applicant shall mostly adhere to the screening standards in Section four of the Unified Zoning Code, which requires a six-to-eight-foot solid screening fence where budding residentially zoned properties. Um, staff is recommending adding language, uh, to include the west property line of the parking lot along North Market Street. Um, I just wanna do a quick note here. Um, this did go to the District Advisory Board, um, also on Monday, and they have some, um, different conditions of approval. Um, I was not present for that, but I will let the applicant, um, expand upon those conditions that were approved by the District Advisory Board on Monday. Just the only really case history with this is that the Wichita City Council, uh, approved the request to vacate the alley last year. Um, in terms of conformance to plans and policies, uh, the requested zone change is in conformance with the Community Investments Plan. Uh, the future growth concept map identifies the site as appropriate for commercial uses. And in terms of the land use compatibility guidelines within the Community Investments Plan, uh, one of the general design guidelines recommends that major commercial and employment centers should be located at the intersections of arterial streets and along highways and commercial corridors. Um, the two arterial streets in question here are East Twenty-first Street and North Market Street. When we look at the Wichita Places for People Plan, uh, there are several strategies, uh, to help guide the community in their actions and create walkable places in Wichita. Strategy three aims to improve the economic feasibility of commercial and service uses and the markets necessary to support them. While strategy six. While strategy six encourages infill and redevelopment that is contextual to the environment in which it is occurring. And in regards to the Twenty-first Street North Corridor Revitalization Plan, the plan aims to promote Wichita as an ethnic and cultural center to the region and create an establishment of an international marketplace emanating from the intersection of Twenty-first and Market in the West Sub area and continued encouragement of further cultural and ethnic commercial uses along the length of Twenty-first Street. So based on the information available at the time of the public hearing, staff recommends approval of the application subject to the provisions in the PUD document and the conditions listed in your staff report. This recommendation is based on the Golden Rules. I still have not heard any public comment regarding the requested zone change. And if you look, if starting on page six of your staff report, you'll see where staff is looking to tweak some of the conditions that they're looking for in their planned unit development. So let's go through some of the site photos. This is looking south towards the site, next slide please. This is also looking south towards the site, this is the former furniture store from nineteen fifty-one, next slide please. This is looking west towards the site, you can see the Nomar Theater on the left side, next slide please. This is looking north towards the site, we see a portion of the parking lot here, next slide please. This is looking north away from the site across East Twenty-first Street, next slide please. This is looking east away from the site across North Market Street, next slide please. This is looking south away from the site, you can see the remainder of the parking lot in question. With that, I will stand for questions from the board, thank you.
Alright, thank you Christina, any questions for staff? Commissioner Aldrich.
Christina, on the staff recommendations, number two requiring on existing parking lots that you're gonna require prior to any community event and parking and transportation, a plan will be submitted, how is that gonna be enforced?
So this will be a part of the community event permit. So this will be a document that they will be required to submit through MABCD. And so if MABCD doesn't know, I'm sorry, I I bespoke, would you would you like to clarify?
Just in the MABCD portion, that does not come into MABCD, there is a, the city has a community events process that goes into the cultural, actually it's in the city manager's office now, I believe, and and there's a whole process with a number of approvers that will look at that. So it would be a requirement that it be submitted with their other documentation for that community event permit.
Okay, cuz I know across the street where the Mercado's at, there's parking there, so I guess would they be able to utilize that of what theirs and that the Mercado part of the 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 community open parking area?
We, normally when a community event permit comes in and they're utilizing properties, it's it's not the property that they're on, so to speak, so they're using other properties, we require permission letters from those owners authorizing permission for use.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you Christina, seeing none, we'll bring the applicant and agent forward to present your case. You have up to ten minutes, give us your name and address and welcome.
Hello, everyone. There is a presentation piece. My name is Ariel Rodriguez and I am the Executive Director of Empower, twenty-six oh one North Arkansas. And I'm just gonna quickly tell you about who we are and our intended use of this facility and then I'll turn it over to Rebecca from PEC. Next slide please. There we go. So Empower is a five oh one C three, we are nonprofit here in the north end of Wichita. So we focus on three key things, small business development, workforce and education. And so when we think about this site, we are gonna be focused as a community nonprofit on how do we activate the culture of the community and how do we support our north end community through those three key programs? Next slide? Or is it me? Perfect.
Yeah.
And as I mentioned, these are our three key areas and we also have the addition of financial education as well. Perfect. Next slide. And so I just wanna give you a couple of key highlights about our project that we are doing here. So currently, we're raising ten million dollars plus, we are very close to make making our goal. And so all that will be used to revitalize those three facilities as described in this plan. Some of our biggest funders are listed here. And then so phase one, which will be completed by twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four, that will contain a commercial kitchen, will have a classroom on-site, the patio space that we'll be talking about here shortly also will be completed, office space, conference room, and then again, the commercial kitchen, which will be utilized by entrepreneurs who are starting their businesses. And phase two, which we hope to start construction by between the third and fourth quarter of twenty twenty-five, that will be the more event center-focused part of the establishment. So we'll be able to have the food hall component, which will have about six to seven food-based businesses for entrepreneurs who are starting their business and starting and growing there. We'll have the bar on-site that will be utilized to help support the cost of the facility. We'll have the theater restored so we can do those community events, have the gathering space and the speed, the seating place on that site, as well as access to that patio space to the west. And again, as I said, our projected construction start date is fall of twenty twenty-five, next slide please. And then again, this is the Bashing Building, so if you just kinda wanna click through some of the next slides, you'll be able to see our proposed renderings for the facility. Next slide. You can keep moving through. And so as you'll see coming up on a couple of slides from here, the patio space is one of the places I just wanna quickly talk about when we get there to make sure that you understand our intended use there. And so as we finish this phase one, which you're seeing some of these classrooms, we're imagining small events there from our educational classroom, that capacity there is about only twenty-some currently at this time. And so we'll be able to access that patio space right there. So when we have different events from our classroom, if they wanna go outside and have some outdoor space in this phase one, if you could go to the next slide. This will be phase two, once we complete that, again, right there at Twenty-first and Market. Next slide. And one more. And so as we look at the first building, the Bashing Building, the one oh three building, this will be looking to the south off of Twenty-first Street. You'll see that we do have this patio space and this is where we hope to be able that diners that are visiting the space can sit outdoors in the evenings and be able to have food while on-site. There will be two screenings, so if you would like to advance one more slide to the end, please. On-site, as we think about live music and some of our culture events that were talked about, we'll be able to utilize this patio again. We'll have one CMU wall with a cedar gate. And then there will be some equipment such as an walk-in cooler, grease things, very kitchen-oriented products. And then there will be one more, if you could go the next slide real quick, there will be one more gate as well and another cedar wall. So there are two levels of screening on the property in between us and some of the properties to the south. And I will turn it over to Rebecca.
Thank you Ariel. Good afternoon, Rebecca Melius, PEC three oh three South Topeka, agent for the applicant and here to address the staff-related items in support of Empower's project here. So we're in agreement with most, all of the comments, we're we're understanding of the parking scenario and wanna reiterate that yes, as that community permit is pulled, which I think is a really good talking point even for some of the other items. As we get into the why we're a nightclub in the city classification, those types of events for anything outdoor does have to be a community permit. So in addition to all of the efforts that we're going through, if we're gonna utilize that parking area to the south to have an outdoor community event, that is an additional permit. It's not like we can have a pop-up event with three hundred people show up, like that has to be a very intentional and planned event. So just an item of note there, so we're in agreement with the modifications. The the first one that I would like to address, and this was brought up at the District Advisory Board and supported by the District Advisory Board on Monday evening, was in lieu of permanent screening along the west side, and if we could go back to the Ariel really quickly, along the the current parking lot, we would implore you to consider a temporary fence scenario in conjunction with those community event permits. Understanding this is currently a GC-zoned property, there is B multifamily, which is the most lenient of the residential zoning districts in the zoning code adjacently to our west. And so that that current condition is not gonna change in from day-to-day operations. There is a a chance, again, that we would have a community event in this parking lot area. So we would just request that in lieu of permanent screening along this west property line, that we would be able to bring in a temporary fence to protect the visual from these residential properties during those community events. So that is number one. And then number two is as hours of operations, we spent more time than I'd care to admit really strategizing how to break this out to try and be really intentional with our different facets. You'll notice that we have both outdoor music, outdoor food service and then events in three separate sections to try to, again, be intentional with how we're going to function. Outdoor music, you'll notice on the site plan that's in your packet and on the presentation that Ariel gave, that the stage itself and all of those speakers are north and northeasterly facing to be as far away and and not directionally sounding music, thank you very much, nice work. Stage here, and again, to Ariel's point, masonry wall, CMU here is blocking that, these are then also cedar fences. So all of this music for this patio space is is facing the other commercial across Twenty-first Street, so very intentionally laid out. So the District Advisory Board was in support of stopping the music early. We would, we're we're in agreement with that, so we're not gonna request any deviation from that. But to ask us to be more restrictive than the base zoning district of GC for what what Connie's could do down the road, you know, Connie's got an outdoor patio, they don't have to stop serving food at nine PM. It would be really nice if we would be able to still consider providing food service later into the evening, especially on those early summer nights when everybody wants to to be enjoying the cool by the time it's finally cool out, that's our hope. So we'd ask that you'd reconsider the hours and both for outdoor food and drink service and for those outdoor events. Again, right now, the the main fiesta that Empower puts on goes until eleven o'clock. We'd we'd really like to be able to continue that in the future. So we would request that we not adopt staff's recommendations in items eight and nine, that those could remain as originally requested. And at this point, I think those are the main things, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you all have for either Ariel or myself. And thank you very much for your time.
Yes, we do have a question here, Commissioner Aldrich.
Yeah, I served on several committees up in the North Market area to help establish the Nomar District and everything else. It, you know, a couple of years it's been worked on, a lot of people have been involved, a lot of hours have been involved, a lot of hopes, a lot of dreams on this, and it's not really taken off the way the the hopes and and the dreams were on us. I I truly hope that you're very successful, you know, with with this. I'm glad to see a lot of the revitalizations of some of these buildings could possibly take place. But you hardly ever see anybody at the Nomar area. Most of the parking lot over there is used by the vehicle maintenance shop just to the the north of that. You know, I'm blocking the alley and everything else there, but, you know, I I like to see those things succeed. There's been, again, so much time, so many people involved in it and and so many dollars that's been spent on this thing over the years, including taxpayers' dollars. You know, I like to see success, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Blick.
I just have a quick question, so when you talk about indoor/outdoor food, you're just talking about the actual north part, the south parking lot, we're not talking about food trucks or anything, unless there's a community event and a community event application, is that correct?
That's correct.
Cool, thank you.
This is just addressing that patio space between the two buildings.
Yeah, hold on, Commissioner Johnson, Joe.
I'm just gonna make a motion we approve. But I didn't, go ahead.
Yeah, we got a couple more questions too, I think. But go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, I'd like to address, you know, I think the applicant's done a good job of explaining their perspective and where they're coming from. I'd like to explain a little bit more fully the staff perspective. On this one, we were not actually sure where the entertainment was going to be taking place. We had the assumption that it would be utilizing the large parking lot. And so a lot of the recommendations that you see that we've written are to address any spillover effects and such from that. Now, hearing what the applicant's desires are and understanding, you know, what we've run into in the past with complaints and stuff from developments, understanding that the restaurant space and the dining space and the outdoor entertainment space would be mostly in that former alley area and pointed to the north, which is to Twenty-first Street, which is a, you know, it's it's an arterial street and so it sees a certain level of traffic throughout the day and into the evening. I I think that that in and of itself will help with some of the noise concerns. But I think in order to provide assurances for both the community and for the operator, I think it would be good on the site plan for it to identify the locations where the food and beverage and entertainment will take place on a regular basis outside of those permits. And then with that knowledge, I think that provides a little bit more flexibility for the hours because then the community has, and the operators too, have a more certainty about where that's gonna be occurring. And then if you wanna operate something outside of that, you can always use a special event permit to work towards, you know, doing other programming.
So to that end, when we talk about item nine, where the applicant didn't defer between indoor and outdoor events and asked for eleven o'clock shut-off Sunday through Thursday and midnight shut-off Friday and Saturday, correct?
Yes, sir.
Staff delineated between indoor and outdoor events and asked for different hours. Is staff now saying that you're okay with the original request as long as they market? Because that's what I'm feeling. While you're thinking that through, I think we had a question over here somewhere. That was your question too, okay. Did you have one, William Spay?
Yes, I do. I have a question on the fencing, you wanted to use temporary rather than permanent fencing and where would that be located?
Yes, sir, and if we could go back to the area, I can depict that a little bit better. So along the current parking lot, this parcel is zoned commercial, but these parcels are zoned B multifamily. Now, they're used in a duplex and triplex, they're, that's how they're occupied, but they're currently zoned of B multifamily. So the request from staff's revision in our on our text is that we would construct a screening fence and let it be advised that it is a screening fence, so from visualization only, not to prevent noise along this west property line. Our major concern with that is it's just going to create an easier place for vandalism or illegal dumping in that alley. Scott mentioned it, we, this alley was previously vacated. In a perfect world, we could, we could fence off from our building all the way over. That's not feasible because this is the emergency out for vehicles that come down the alley. This has to remain open right here, that was an an access easement that was dedicated as a condition of the vacation case that you all saw about a year ago. So our concern is for day-to-day, cuz again, we're not, we're not having events in the parking lot every day. It's periodically, there are special community events, our hope is that you would consider this as a temporary fence and it could be one that has fabric or the the slats that go through it, so it provides the appropriate amount. It can be like a chain link fence that has slats or screening so that it creates that visual barrier that could be brought in for that special event and then removed when it was completed.
Okay.
Yep.
Go back to Scott, did you?
Yeah, part of the, I mean, it's a, it's a tricky thing to kinda just work on this on the fly, you know, in front of everyone, but that's what you all have to do on a regular basis, so. I I think part of it too is in the illustrations that were shown of the outdoor dining space, it was contained in that former alley area in between two buildings and there appeared to be a wall to the, on the south end of that area where kind of the stage and the performer was shown in the illustration.
Yes, sir.
I I think knowing that sound will travel through any gap, like vegetation is not. I think knowing that sound will travel through any gap, like vegetation is not soundproofing, it has to be a solid wall. I have a much higher degree of comfort with allowing later events if I know that there's a solid wall in between where that's keeping the noise from traveling south because of the proximity of the residences immediately to the south and knowing that to the north is more commercial and a substantial distance before you get to the residential buildings. So I guess that's the long background, but the short answer is yes, from a staff perspective, unless JR or Phillip feel strongly against that, I would say that we would be comfortable with those hours that were originally suggested or proposed by the applicant if there are two things. One, the site plan identifies specifically where those, where that dining and the entertainment is going to be taking place on the site plan, and any major changes need to be reviewed by the planning commission. And then two, that as a condition of this approval, there would also be a wall or a solid barrier between those two buildings to ensure that, you know, noise will be projected to the north.
So, two clarifying questions really quick, just to make sure that I've got my ducks in a row, or at least in the same pond. So the site plan that was submitted, we could add some additional callouts to specify the limits, and that just becomes a new supporting document that's on file with our final approved PUD. Okay. And then number two, just to clarify, so there is, this is CMU, there is a cedar fence, and if we go to the very last slide, are we comfortable with that considering there is that second cedar fence?
Yes.
So, here, okay.
I am, and the reason why is because you often see that on noise walls along interstates is you will see them made out of wood. Now, that, I would not recommend that, except in this instance, you're trying to get a startup facility up and running quickly. I think wood will work, it's just a matter of maintenance or CM or whatever the material is, it's just a matter of maintenance, that's all.
Yep, and again, the main purpose of that is access from the different facets through those, so that's the purpose of those gates. Awesome. Thank you, Scott.
Okay, any more questions for the applicant? Thank you. We'll now ask the public to come forward if you have any comments or questions. Anyone from the public? For some reason, I thought there was earlier, that's why we heard it.
Yeah, it was actually, they were sitting over there.
Okay, all right.
There was one here, but they left.
That's what I thought, okay. So no public comment, closing, no rebuttal necessary. We bring it back to the board for consideration. Phillip?
Just a suggestion, if you will, considering the complexities and moving parts of this, would you like a recap of staff recommendation, DAB recommendation slash what the applicant is kind of has agreed to versus kind of essentially where are we now?
Sure, that'd be appreciated.
That'd be helpful, okay. I was the staff person who presented at DAB six.
Okay, go ahead.
I was the staff person who presented at DAB six, so I'm very familiar with the conversation that had happened. So I'm going to run through the items kind of in order of the PUD language in your item of the, essentially the items that were under consideration for what to accept or what to not accept. Regarding the parking, staff has a recommendation in the PUD language at the district advisory board meeting, the applicant said that they were amenable to the, so item number one of your, or item number two of your PUD language, DAB recommended approval of the staff recommendation, and the applicant is amenable to that. Regarding screening, so we're talking about item number six of your PUD language, the DAB recommended approval per the applicant's request regarding temporary fencing during community events only. Regarding the hours of operation for outdoor music, item number seven, the DAB recommended approval of the staff recommendation for that. For item number eight, for outdoor food service, the DAB recommendation was the applicant's request allowing it to be at 11:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and midnight Friday and Saturday. And then the final thing was the outdoor events, number nine on your PUD text, the DAB recommendation was the staff recommendation, which restricts the hours, and then the applicant is requesting the leeway per what they are requesting. So that's kind of the recap when someone is considering a motion, and I'd be happy to answer clarifying questions or rehash any of those if needed.
All right. I'm anxious to hear Bob's motion now. Commissioner Miles.
I just need to ask a question of Legal. So I don't know whether it abstained from a vote on this. I helped to found this organization, and I have donated towards the building, the creation of this.
So for the record, you will be abstaining, Commissioner Miles?
I will be abstaining. I thought I should abstain, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, so, no matter, it's the will of the body.
I checked it out.
I thought Joe was going to make it, then he left.
I'll make, I'll.
Hold on.
Either way.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, subject to the staff comments and the changes that have been altered between, like, if, I was going to ask, begin with, does the applicant agree to what has been there?
I think Phillip did a great job summarizing. I think we're in agreement with all of the things, I think the only thing left, if you're in agreement with Phillip's summary, would be if you would consider going back to our original language on item nine. That's the only one.
With the fence, the staff was, were they not?
I'm not clear if Scott's, what I understood was Scott was comfortable, or staff was comfortable with the outdoor music and outdoor food service based on the revised site plan, but I wasn't sure if that applied to the events or not. So I just, in full disclosure, I don't know where that lands, but we would still request our original language if possible.
That'd be with a solid fence, correct?
Conditional on the temporary fence being brought in during those community events, yes, sir.
Seems like they agreed, I just wanted to make sure when I make my motion that they both agree.
Okay, quick. For staff, would that, is that with a temporary fence, or was that a?
Only during events.
During, just during events, or would that be a solid fence?
So there's, I think there's two sets of fencing that we're talking about. The first one is the screening fence that takes place, they're requesting during events, the temporary screening fence, and that was in response to the staff comment. I would still hold where the staff report is right now, although I think they've got a really good discussion on that one. I'm not, just not enough time for me to analyze it, I just don't, I'm not sure where, any changes on that one, but I think you've got their proposal versus what's in the staff report. The second one then is, in terms of number eight, when we're talking about the entertainment establishment and the hours for that one, as well as the outdoor music, so I think seven and eight, right? You're requesting to go to your original language.
Correct, assuming that we provide the clarifications on the site plan, because the walls are shown just not as clearly, as comprehensible, so the revisions on the site plan.
Yeah, and it would be limited to those sites that we've talked about in the former alley, and that there would be a solid wall or, you know, solid fence barrier.
Protection on the south side, yes, sir.
Yes, on the south side then. So that I think addresses seven and eight, but then number nine, with events of 300 attendees or more, I would still stick with the staff recommendation in here, knowing that if things change in the future and the community's really comfortable with it, it can always be modified in the future, but at this time, you know, large events, we're hearing comments about event centers out in the county, and here's one right in, you know, events that could happen on a large parking lot right in the middle of a residential area.
So what you're saying is leave the time, instead of saying midnight on Saturday, Friday and Saturday, leave it at 11:00 PM, is what you're saying?
It's for number nine, so it says, outdoor event shall be allowed between the hours of 10:00 and 9:00 PM Sunday through Thursday, and 10:00 AM and 11:00 PM Friday and Saturday.
Okay, what the original was.
At the midnight on number eight, comfortable with that, with what we've talked about? And with number seven, comfortable with that, as we've talked about?
So I have a question to the applicant. You made a comment about the restaurant around the corner, is that coincide with those hours?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first portion of your question.
It's Connie's across the street.
Connie's, the restaurant around the corner? You said you wanted to compromise to their, be the complement of their hours.
My comment is purely, the current zoning district is general commercial, and there is no restriction on when we would have to end or have any kind of hours of operation for a traditional restaurant service. The outdoor events is a new wrinkle, right? It brings a challenge, and so we're happy to specify indoor versus outdoor. Again, my hope is just not to limit current planned events for this organization. You know, the Fiesta is traditionally on a weekend, but what happens if it needs to be on a Thursday night? And we have to stop now based on this language at 9:00 PM instead of allowing that to go to 10:00 or 11:00. That's our whole goal is, to Scott's point, yes, it can be amended in the future. Our hope was, as we're continuing to build this and grow this, to give ourselves some flexibility in what our opportunities are, understanding that we still have to go get a community event permit to be able to do anything outdoors on that parking lot.
Okay, I see Commissioner Williams Bay.
I just want to get clarification, so I understand here. Scott, you're okay with the temporary fence along the south property line?
With the DAB on it. And it's during events.
That was the DAB's recommendation. I'm not sure that staff has provided official thought on that. That was the district advisory board's recommendation at our request.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking the question, if planning is okay with that.
Our perspective on the, on number six for the west side of the main parking lot is to require screening and not the temporary fence, the DAB recommended for the temporary fence. And Mr. Chair, if I could, I talked with Legal, and regarding the complexity of this case, there has been a motion for approval per discussion and comments. I think if you could, I might run through one at a time and have Mr. McKay essentially describe yea or nay, like this is what my motion includes.
Are you all right with that, John?
Well, the thing is this, is it, I'm like Joe was, I'm in favor of the project, but I know there's some discussion, and I didn't want to defer another period, he got to work this out.
Sure, and I think we can, I think we can get it figured out. I just want to make sure the motion is clear and everybody is clear with what the motion for approval is.
All right, quickly.
So, yeah, so Mr. McKay, on the parking, staff and the applicant are agreement on this one. You want to go with the staff recommendation? Yes? Yes. Yes, so parking is per staff recommendation. Screening, we have to decide. Screening for the west parking lot.
Number six.
Yep, staff is recommending solid, permanent screening, the applicant is asking for temporary screening. What?
The west side?
To the west side of the main parking lot. What does your motion include?
Without the, they wanted temporary, you wanted.
Which one are you choosing to include in your?
So you're going with staff?
So McKay's motion includes staff recommendation for the screening of the west side of the parking lot.
Okay.
Number six.
Number six.
Number seven, outdoor music, staff and the applicant are amenable to the applicant's requested for hours. Number eight?
Which is, which is 11:00, Sunday through Thursday, and midnight Friday and Saturday.
Correct.
Okay.
Outdoor dining hours, again, it sounds like we've come to an agreement on the applicant's requested 11:00 PM at midnight distinction on hours. And then the final one is outdoor events. One distinguishing between indoor and outdoor events, and staff recommendation is still different than the applicant recommendation. Which one is part of the motion, Mr. McKay?
We're a little slow to difference.
Yes, so the applicant on number nine had hours of operation for indoor and outdoor events the same, ending at 11:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and midnight on Friday and Saturday. Staff recommendation is to okay those hours for indoor events, but have restricted hours for outdoor events at 9:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and 11:00 PM Friday and Saturday. Do you want the applicant request or staff recommendation?
Well, I'd say the applicant.
Okay. So for clarification, just so everybody's aware of the motion, the parking is per staff recommendation, the screening is per staff recommendation, hours of operation for outdoor music and hours of operation for dining are per the applicant's request, and then the outdoor events is per staff recommendation, correct?
Uh, no.
No.
Number nine is?
So I'm sorry, the last three, the last three are per the applicant's request.
So can you give us the times, for eight and nine?
Well, one clarification real quick, is that on numbers seven and eight, those are with an additional condition that the site plan would specify where the dining and entertainment would take place, and that would be limited to the alley in between the two, former alley in between the two buildings. And?
We agreed to that.
They did. And also, another condition that there would be a solid, what do we call it, barrier in between the two buildings to ensure that the noise and light and sound and everything stays on that north side.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
I will second based on our recommendations.
All right. Commissioner Warren?
The question I have is, the applicant said that they were good with a solid screening, but temporary. I like that. And what we put in here is a solid screening that's permanent. So I'm opposed to the.
But for item number six? Item six.
I wonder, how many times a year do we have need for the temporary screening? I mean, how often would that occur?
Can we completely waive the screening?
Well, no, I mean, I, temporary screen makes more sense to me, just rather than a solid screen. I'm just wondering how often you'd need it, how hard is it to put up, where do you store?
So currently projected, I would say quarterly. Obviously, this is a growing event. If there's a desire for more, there is a possibility for more. The, again, the concern becomes the adjacent alley and then just the general site constraints. Installing a permanent screening with the existing parking is rather challenging. So that's part of why we're advocating for that temporary. I would assume, sir, that we're going to end up leasing that, that's going to be a cost, we're not going to be storing that. It'd be something that we would acquire as a part of our community plan.
It just seems to me that that'd make more sense than a solid screening along there.
Yeah, but you still got to make sure, you got residences right along right there. So you still got to make sure that you protect their privacy from the commercial end.
I think they volunteered the fence anyhow, on the west especially.
In a temporary condition would be our preferred, yes, sir.
So the motion right now is for a permanent fence, right?
Well, it could be a fence, it's just a solid screen. So it could be a banner that was that size that couldn't see through.
Well, I know, all I know is during the presentation, she felt like there should be a solid, she mentioned about the property to the west is zone B, but it's duplexes, and they even do that to protect that portion of the.
John, can it be a, can it be a solid temporary screen?
Yes.
You know, where you put up the fabric sort of thing, that you can move it?
I thought this was going to be simple.
Nothing is. Okay.
I think they're give and take both ways on this, so I'll stick with my motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We've had good discussion. Commissioner Blick?
I got a substitute motion. Of course I do. I'd say everything, I put on a lot of events in Wichita, and I know that you can lease a fence, and you can get, just like Rebecca was saying, get stripes. You can put scrim on there, that'll help prevent a lot of that. And I'd say everything else except for allow them on community events, when they put their application, they can get a temporary fence that has some type of screening besides just a chain link fence.
Second.
All right, any more discussion?
Could that go hand in hand with the motion that's been made?
Is that friendly amendment?
Is amendment rather than another motion?
Are you are you comfortable with that as a friendly amendment to your motion? John? Second? Is the second agreeable to that? Wasn't the second over here?
Yeah. I will draw my motion then.
So we have a friendly amendment to it, they're both accepted. All right, call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Anyone on the fence? Sorry.
Thank you all very much.
All right, now, before we call the next items, I want to see if the people that wanted to hear those items are still here. Four point ten, zone twenty twenty four fifty two. Is that still need to be heard?
Yes.
Okay, is item four eleven, zone twenty twenty four fifty four, the people that still wanted to hear that here? Okay, and same with the last one, which is zone twenty twenty four fifty six. Are the people that wanted to hear that one still here? Okay, well, let's move ahead with item four ten. Zone change request.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. We're discussing case Z O N twenty twenty four dash zero 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 fifty two. For this case, the applicant is requesting a zone change for two properties from S F five, single family residential, and T F three, two family residential, to M F eighteen, multi-family residential. The applicant owns the two lots and has indicated that he intends to use the site for multi-family development by building four duplex buildings, so eight total dwelling units. You can see on the on the screen, the two lots there. One is north and one is south, thank you. Based on the size of the subject site, the applicant would be able to place up to those four duplexes. Compatibility standards would apply for both setbacks and height limits. The applicant would be required to adhere to the off-street parking schedule, which requires one point two five parking stalls per efficiency and one-bedroom dwell dwelling units and one point seven five parking stalls per two-bedroom or larger units. The applicant would be required to submit a landscape plan prior to the issuance of building permits. And the U C C requires screening of multi-family uses when a budding or across the street or alley from property zone T F three are more restrictive. So applicable screening and landscape buffering would be required along the northwest and south property lines. But taking a look at the zoning maps, the properties are surrounded on all sides by the S F five district and are developed on all sides by single-family dwellings. A multi-family residential use is located on property zone B, multi-family residential district, approximately one thousand feet away, and it's this area right here, about two blocks to the east. Additionally, there are several duplex structures within three hundred and fifty feet of the subject site in all directions. On October twenty ninth nineteen twenty nine, the subject sites were plotted as lots seven and eight, block eight of the Fruitville Park addition. And in February of two thousand twenty four, so just earlier this year, the lot addressed as three twenty one North Doris Street. So the the north lot here did receive a zone change from S F five to T F three. The subject sites currently have access to North Doris Street, a two-lane unpaved local street with no sidewalks on either side. Municipal post services do serve the site. And Wichita Transit serves the area at the southeast corner of the intersection of North Doris Street and West Second Street North. The requested zone change is in conformance with the community investments plan. If we can go to the future growth map. The map recommends the subject site as appropriate for residential uses. Staff believes that the duplex development is an appropriate use for the area. The requested zone change is also in conformance with the goals of the Wichita Places for People Plan. Strategy five is that to provide a diversity of housing options to attract new residents and allow existing residents to remain in the E C A. And we believe, again, that adding a duplex to the neighborhood will not adversely affect the area. If we can go to site fix. This is looking west into the property from North Doris, next picture. This is looking north away from the property, next picture. It's looking east away from the property and the last picture. This is looking south away from the property. And I did want to mention that this case did go before the DAB six on December ninth. And they did recommend to approve a zone change of T F three on the south property, not to go all the way to M F eighteen, which would allow for basically a duplex on the south property and a duplex on the north property. So I did want to just let you know that that's what DAB recommended. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Brad. Any questions from the commission? Seeing none, I'd like to ask the applicant agent to come forward. You will have up to ten minutes. Please give us your name and address and welcome.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Sergio Corillo, one zero zero two three West Hardner Avenue, six seven two one two. And I don't know if it was just a matter of misunderstanding, we only planning to build four units, not eight units.
Sorry, four units on each lot?
No. So if you picture the lot, it's a hundred and twenty by a hundred and twenty, pretty much one unit on each corner. That's how we, a a unit, it's two-door, it's it'll be a a two-story unit. So eight doors, that's all we're trying to build.
So eight dwelling units, four duplexes, eight dwelling units.
Right.
Is that correct?
Pardon me?
Four duplexes, which would mean eight dwelling units.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other, any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir, you might want to stand by.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Please give us your name and address for the record and you all have up to three minutes and welcome.
Thank you. Russell Women, fifty two ten West Second. I live on the corner of Second and Doris. My concerns, I think it's an overdevelopment for this neighborhood. A lot of safety issues, being on a dirt road, kids walking to and from school. They walk in the street because there are no sidewalks. Majority of the traffic do does not stop at the stop signs on Doris. I know that's not his problem. Speaking at the district advisory board, they recommended and approved having two-family on each lot. I'm not opposed to that. I am, I'm opposed to a multi-family going larger. That's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, appreciate it, sir. Mr. Cario? How was the last name? This is your opportunity to answer his concern if you wanted to address. You're good? Okay, so we'll bring it back to the board. Commissioner Aldrich?
I have a question for for staff. You know, I know this is, I hate dirt roads in the inner core city. That's, there's no reason why we should have that, you know, especially today's times. But I understand that probably the majority of these properties, that takes what, fifty-one percent to to have that that brought in? You know, I used to live up around this area a long time ago. We see a lot of infill development coming up here to help take care of some of these vacant lots and stuff. I I wish there were some way that we had to trigger that, whether the council representative could order that in, which by understanding they, it can be done. But, yeah, I'd like to see that happen one of these days, but that's just for conversations. But I'm, I, you know, I do support what the applicant is trying to do here. I just don't like the dirt roads.
Question for staff, just want to make sure I understand, the the lot on the north is zoned T F three. The lot on the south is still S F five.
Correct.
The request is to make both lots to M F eighteen.
Correct.
The DAB approved the southern lot being T F three.
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Warren?
We should approve the request per staff comment and staff comments and recommendations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve per staff recommendations. Any other discussion or comment? Seeing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item eleven, zone twenty twenty four dash fifty four. A single-family residential to M F eighteen as well.
Hello, everyone, this is Mamita Kundu from Planning and I'll be presenting zoning case twenty twenty four triple zero five four. The applicant is requesting zone change from single-family residential to M F eighteen, multi-family residential district for multi-family development. The site is located on the northeast corner of North Hoover Street and West Robinson Street. Staff is recommending approval of this request. The subject site is currently undeveloped. The applicant's site plan, if you can move to the site plan, please. The next. The next, yes, thank you. The applicant's site plan indicates that they intend to develop a single tract containing ten duplexes, that's twenty dwelling units under one ownership. The character of the neighborhood is residential. The site is adjacent to the I two thirty-five highway to the west. Properties to the north, south, and east are zoned S F five, single-family residential and are developed with single-family dwellings or are undeveloped. The abating property, if you can move to the zoning map, please, I'm sorry. The abating property to the east. Mohammed, if you can move to the zoning map, please, thank you. The abating property to the east is zoned T F three, two-family residential with a protective overlay, which restricts the development of the site to a maximum of two duplexes, that's four dwelling units. Within one quarter mile to the south, there is presence of parcels zoned M F eighteen and M F twenty-nine with multi-family development. Should this request be approved, the applicable screening and landscape buffering would be required along the north, south, and east property lines. The site has access to Hoover Street, North Hoover Street on the west, which is a paved two-lane collector street. And on south, there is West Robinson Street, which is a gravel local street. The requested rezoning is in conformance with the Community Investment Plan twenty thirty-five. It identifies the subject site as appropriate for commercial development and use. The proposed use of developing multi-family residence is less intensive usage than identified in the plan. Adding residences to the neighborhood would increase the diversity of resident types and densities in the area. The surrounding neighborhood is predominantly residential and the request of rezoning it to M F eighteen at this location should not have a detrimental effect on the surrounding residential neighborhood. The request is also, the subject area is within the established central area and the locational guidelines for the E C A encourages infill development where public investment is in existence and the planned infrastructure can be maximized and the request is in conformance with that. The subject area is identified as an area of opportunity by the Wichita Places for People Plan and the request for multi multi-family residential use will confirm to the strategies listed in the Places for People Plan for area of opportunity. Based upon the information available at the time the staff report was completed and staff recommends approval of the requested M F eighteen zoning. At the time of publication of the staff report, the staff has received no calls or public comments. The case was heard at DAB six on December ninth and the DAB approved M F eighteen with protective overlay requiring a hip or gabled roof to be more compatible with the architecture in the district. And with that, I'll go with the site photos. So this is looking from west towards the property. Next. This is looking from east towards the property. Next. These are the duplexes on the west towards the property, looking from west towards the property. Next. Looking from south towards the property. Next. And this is looking south away from the property. Next. Looking from ways west away from the property. Next. This is the West Robinson Street, south of the property. Next. With that, I'll stand for any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Aldrich?
Robinson's a dirt road right there, isn't it?
Yes.
No, they could be, any paving requirements?
No. And actually, at the district advisory board, again, I presented this there. The applicant indicated that because Robinson is gravel, they actually changed the layout of their property to exit onto Hoover. So their site plan shows their exit onto Hoover. There was discussion of when it was paved and apparently with current budget constraints, paving of roads within existing areas has been backlogged, for lack of a better term, or is extended from an original idea. But it was pretty far out that the city has it in the C I P. To get to Robinson.
Right, the original focus of paving dirt roads was within a half mile of public schools. That was the priority.
On the previous case, Doris was actually not too far away, but Robinson here is pretty far out.
In the shortest time we're going to happen.
Yeah, they can petition and pay for it. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Any, is the applicant agent available? Thank you. Please give us your name and address and you have up to ten minutes, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Will Clevenger with Garver here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Address is nineteen ninety-five Midfield Road, Wichita, Kansas, six seven two zero nine. We are in agreement with staff comments, including the idea about the protective overlay for hip and gable type roofs. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, Commissioner Blick?
Great job on this site plan, it looks really good. You got thirty-five spaces, twenty residents. Just had a quick question and the Hoover entrance also instead of coming into the residential. But on that hammerhead, do you know how long that is on the backside?
I do not know how long it is, but we do have the fire department requirements and we use those when we laid out this hammerhead.
That's all I have, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Any more questions for the applicant agent? Seeing none, thank you, stand by.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission on this? Please give us your name and address, you have up to three minutes and welcome.
My name's Kevin Kralacek and I reside at ten fifty-eight North Hoover Road. So I'm right on Robinson and Hoover is where I'm located. And I just wanted to, my main concern was where the entry to that property would be. And it definitely will be off of Hoover.
That is, the revised site plan shows it being on Hoover.
I was concerned that it would be facing me on.
No, they have changed it. Right, they've changed it and they're submitting as off of Hoover.
Okay, well, that was my main concern.
All right.
And that should be all I needed to know, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clevenger, do you need to rebut anything? Okay. With that, we'll bring it back to the board for consideration and action discussion.
Motion to approve was staff's recommendation.
We have a motion and a second, a motion by Commissioner Blick, second by Commissioner Miles. Mr. Philip Zivinberg?
Not, yes, not that you have to, but since they were amenable to the DAB recommendation, this would save a non-consent item at city council. If you guys have a different recommendation, then city council would have to differentiate between the two. Was whether or not you wanted to include a protective overlay.
Was whether or not you wanted to include a protective overlay with hip or gabled roof since the applicant was amenable to the DAB recommendation.
I'd say so.
Your friend?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we have Blick and Miles?
Yes.
Sounds good.
All right.
Sounds like a law firm. Thank you for keeping us on track.
Call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion, motion passes unanimously. Last item. Number uh 4.13, Zone 2024-56. I appreciate everyone's patience. I know, again, this is the only meeting we had in December, so that's why it all got stacked.
And just for all your hard work, you guys don't have to come back till January.
Get some time off.
I'll need to stay in from this because I have a business in the notification zone.
Thank you.
Yes. Well, good evening. Can we call it evening? It's dark outside. Philip Zievenberg, and for the record, Zone 2456 is requested changes zoning from neighborhood retail with protective overlay 375. To limited commercial. The property is located on the east side of North Hillside, uh, within a couple blocks south of west central or east central, sorry. Uh, the applicant did not have an intended use. They are looking to increase the avail uh opportunities for commercial development on the site. For those of you who've been on the commission for a while, you may recognize this property in 2021, it was requested to zone it, rezone it from GO and MF29 to neighborhood retail. The city council uh approved the request per a District One Advisory Board recommendation, which included a protective overlay. Number 375, which prohibited cash loan, um, entitled loan type establishments, as well as prohibiting a restaurant. There's a detailed table in your um staff report regarding the differences in uses that limited commercial would allow. Instead of what is already allowed in neighborhood retail with a protective overlay. Overall, staff is recommending approval of this with a amended protective overlay and also the very last page of your staff report. Uh, has a applicant proposed protective overlay that was not submitted in time to be included as part of staff's review. Uh, the district advisory board one uh heard this on December 2nd and recommended approval per the applicant's. Language of the protective overlay. So that last page of your staff report, that is the recommendation for approval. From the district advisory board. It's what the applicant is asking for. The surrounding area is uh predominantly commercial, at least along hillside. You have a PUD to the north. With retail and restaurants, you have uh restaurants and multifamily and office spaces on the west side of hillside. You do have residential to the rear because of that they're required to have screening and landscaping. Also, any parking lots along hillside would be required to have landscaping as well. Um, staff does have modified language protective overlay. It does not match the applicant's. Again, we did not receive that in time to have a review of it. Overall, staff's recommendation for approval with a modified PO would prohibit the following uses, the cash advance entitled loan or similar type of lending business, which was original. Um, that's not changing. Recycling collection station, public reverse vending machine, construction sales and service, convenience store, pawn shop, and vehicle repair limited. It would then allow a restaurant per the standards of neighborhood retail. Neighborhood retail does allow a restaurant, however, it restricts its size to 2,000 square feet and it also restricts it from having a drive through. And so staff's perspective is there are restaurants in the area. I presented this in 2021, um, and the discussion at the DAB at that time was concerns of noise of a speaker as well as odor. Staff's perspective is odor is gonna go and they're probably already getting that from existing restaurants in the area, even for restaurants that are closer to central and hillside. Um, but staff would agreed with the idea of not having an a drive through speaker as the sound could carry through the screening fence to the backyards of the residences. So a restaurant would be permitted, it would just not be able to have a drive through, um, per the staff recommended language of the PO. Um, reviewing the applicant's request, they have a list of prohibited uses, which is different from staff's. Their drive through speaker would have to be on the north side of the property and the speakers would have to be directed away from the residential area, so their speaker would have to be up here. And all lighting would have to be cut off design and shall be directed uh away from adjacent residential property. Which is standard in the code anyway. And then they added a provision regarding trash collection and hours of operation for trash collection with the idea of minimizing noise. This is an area of the comprehensive plan, which identifies it for new residential, however, new residential allows for commercial development based on market driven factors, so it's in conformance with that. And it would bring, um, it would utilize existing infrastructure in the essential established area, um, which is meets the strategies of the Wichita Places for People Plan. So again, staff is recommending approval. There's a difference of opinion on protective overlay and I can stand for any question.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you. We'll ask the applicant agent to come forward, give us your name, address. You have up to 10 minutes and welcome.
Thank you very much. Kim Edgington, PSC Consulting, 2532 North Cardinal Drive, Wichita, Kansas. Save the best for last, I guess. In the three years since we were here before on this zone case, um, the prohibition on restaurants for this property has become. Pretty problematic in marketing this and in finding an end user. So that is what brings us back here today. Um, we did meet with the representative of the College Hill Neighborhood Association, Trish Heilman. And I believe she shared with uh staff and uh eventually to you that their support of this project. And we did go to the district advisory board where district advisory board was very supportive of the project. And ended up voting unanimously to recommend approval per the protective overlay that we had submitted. One of the essential differences between what staff is recommending and what we have submitted is the provision of a drive through. Um, we did include that, as Philip mentioned, that the drive through would be on the north portion of the property, that any speakers would have to be directed. Away from the residential to the east, um, and the DAB and the College Hill Neighborhood Association uh were both supportive of that. Uh, we also did uh deliver notices to all of the properties along Holyoke. The majority of those houses are renter occupied, so they did not receive the required notification. So we delivered notices to them, informing them of the dates of the DAB meeting and this meeting as well and with our contact information. Uh, if they so desired to reach out to us for any more information. We did not get any responses from those notifications, nor did any of those people show up um at the DAB meeting. So today we are asking for your support for this zone change along with the protective overlay that we have proposed. And that was recommended by the district advisory board. I would be glad to stand for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Commissioner Aldrich?
Yeah, Kim, I noticed on the uh mics.
Hit the mic.
I notice on your uh protective overlay that was submitted in what the DAB. It uh clearly shows that there would not be any payday loan, title loan establishment. But does that exclude a a bank, for example, or just payday?
Yeah, this gets back into that gray area. We've had this discussion before. So financial institution would still be allowed. Um, it is specifically the payday loan type, title loan establishment that would be prohibited per this protective overlay.
No, okay, I would just want to get a classification on that or clarification, excuse me.
Any other questions? Uh, Commissioner Blick?
Kim, I'm just glad it's not a car wash. Looks like it might be a coffee shop, even though there's three around there in the hospital. But uh, are you gonna use that same lot or the parking lot, you gonna conjoin it or have your own separate parking lot? Is there gonna be cross lot access nicely?
We do not have cross, I mean, we will have to, yeah, uh, no, we do not have, that's part of the uh, this medical office that's to the south and we do not have, so we will park. All of our parking needs will be on our property. It is a very small site. It is very limiting, just over two of its size.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you. Please stand by. This is when we bring it out to the public. If there's anyone here would like to comment. Please give us your name and address. For the record, you have up to three minutes and welcome.
Hello, my name is Jack Patton. Uh, address is 337 South Rutan, Wichita, Kansas. And I've just been reelected to the uh College Hill Neighborhood Association president position with a massive raise.
So then you'll be speaking to us from now on instead of Trish?
Yeah.
Okay.
You might get both of us. I can't always control what everybody else says. In regards to this, the uh agent has gone above and beyond uh what is normally uh expected. Or that we we've been experienced with. And uh, we're glad that uh paved the way for for us. We're happy that the the parking plan is set up so that the neighborhood does not have to subsidize or provide parking in any way. Uh, there's no destruction of homes or existing homes in the area, so we're happy that that is maintained. And uh, the primary areas concerns that we had with the facility have been addressed. And so uh, I fully support the approval of this uh, this measure. And uh, happy to have them as new neighborhood uh restaurants and neighbors. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Kim, I don't think you need a, do you need it? Okay. We'll return it back to the board for consideration and action. I will, oh, sorry, Mr. Warren.
I'm able to approve and and go with the uh neighborhood that DAB approved uh protective overlay.
That would be the applicant proposed protective overlay?
Correct.
A second.
Everybody understand? Okay, cool. So all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. One abstain. Motion passes unanimously, one abstain. With that is our last item. I call this meeting adjourned and Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, everything. Happy holidays. We'll see you next year.